Thank you. You may be seated. We are now at 1.04, approved the minutes of the January 2nd, 2023 School Board Meeting.
Sumo.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Stor.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Burke. Ms. Page. Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes. We are now at 1.05, adoption of the agenda.
Sumo.
Second.
So I'd like to present two amendments. One is that 6.02, receive for first review, alternative accreditation plans be postponed to the next board meeting, which I believe is February 1st. And the second amendment is to-
February the 6th.
February 6th, I'm sorry. Thank you. February 6th. And the second amendment is to add a discussion with legal enclosed. The- Any discussion? Yes?
Madam Chair, thank you. The discussion for legal enclosed, do we have? It's pertaining to the RFP? No?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I thought it was the, that's why I'm asking. Thank you. So, I move that we amend the agenda to add clothes to specifically discuss legal services.
Second.
I'm sorry, for legal.
Attorney Lilly, guidance, please.
If they want to withdraw, I think Ms. Jones made the motion to adopt and Dr. Harris Mohammed seconded the original motion. If you want to withdraw that particular motion, or a friendly amendment to accept what Ms. Rizzi added or deleted.
Friendly amendment.
Yeah, to delete item 6.02, to defer that to 2.6, and then to add the legal discussion to closed. And if you all are fine with that, then that motion can move forward with a discussion and then vote.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Stor. Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Page. Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes. Let the record reflect that Ms. Burke has arrived.
Okay, now we're at 2.01, recognition of student representative.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am delighted to introduce Notoriae Carter from Armstrong High School. Notoriae is currently a junior at Armstrong. She is a scholar role student, member of the Armstrong Center for Excellence, and she currently serves on my Student Advisory Council. Notoriae is active in her community, serving as a caregiver and companion for seniors. In her spare time, she enjoys singing, dancing, and stepping. Upon graduation, Notoriae plans to pursue a four-year degree, majoring in nursing or musical theater. Please join me in welcoming Notoriae Carter.
Good evening, Board Chair Rizzi, Vice Chair Burke, Board Members and Superintendent Kamris. Thank you so much for allowing me to join you this evening. I am incredibly grateful for the opportunity to sit amongst you all and to learn more about the work that you do. While I know that the Board and Administration are currently in the process of developing the 2023 to 24 budget, I thought it would be the perfect opportunity to speak with you about teacher salary. I cannot think of another group more deserving of a raise than RPS teachers. You probably see teachers do many things throughout the course of the school day, teaching, bus duty, lesson planning, and attending meetings, but the you off, but what often goes unnoticed is the time, energy, and resources they pour into their students. Our teachers are drained, but they still wake up every morning and do it all over again because they care about us. I know we don't live in a world with unlimited resources, but I encourage you to do everything in your power to show teachers how much they are appreciated by providing them with a salary that academically reflects all of their, all of the work they do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we are in item three, public information. At this time, we don't have anyone signed up. Would anyone like to speak?
I'll read the policy while we wait.
Please, please read the policy. Thank you.
Conduct of speakers. Speakers shall state their full legal name prior to addressing the school board. Speakers will address the school board as a whole rather than individual school board members, the division superintendent, school board attorney, clerk, or any other staff member. The school board will listen to comments but will not respond during the public information period. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to 1) campaign for public office, 2) promote private business ventures, or 3) use per vanity or vulgar language. If a community member's comments during the public information session relate to school-based issues, the chair may refer the individual to Richmond Public Schools Administration for one-on-one consultation and follow-up. It is important that all community members who wish to participate in the public information period abide by the guidelines set forth in this policy. Refusal to abide by the policy will result in the forfeiture of the remaining time that has been allotted to the speaker. Community members may express their views in writing in lieu of any oral presentation. Comments received in writing in lieu of an oral presentation will not be read during the meeting but shall be posted to the school board platform board docs.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please come forward, sign your name, and we'll be happy to hear what you share with us. Thank you.
As a reminder, individuals have three minutes to speak and those representing an organization have five.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable School Board Members.
Good evening.
And Mr. Superintendent.
Will you please state your name?
My name is T. Chi Pinkney Epps.
Thank you.
I stand before you as a former school board representative, but today I represent my own business, Epps Educational Enterprises, where I provide advocacy, consulting, and training regarding education and the services provided therein. This evening, I really wanted to come in and speak to the budget. The, well, the superintendent's estimate of needs. I've had an opportunity to speak with some of your constituents, some of your building principals, and even some central administration staff. And I would ask you, as your school board, as the representatives of all of these individuals, your constituents, that you afford the community an opportunity to have the superintendent, along with his team, to at least come into the communities and break down this budget. Your average parent has no clue what these numbers mean when they hear about per pupil cost, but it doesn't equate to the value of the service that some of them honestly say they're not receiving. It's your responsibility to show your due diligence as ultimately the individuals who are going to propose the school board. And understanding the timeline, one public hearing for the community is not enough. And you want to take care of that on the front end. So I implore you, I don't think you're voting on the budget tonight on the superintendent's needs, but I would ask that if you are really in honor of the educational compact that you have with the city, that you take an opportunity to, at the upcoming council meetings, if you don't have an opportunity to schedule meetings yourself, to come out and speak to the budget.
Time.
I represent a business. I just spoke for five minutes. Did I?
If you're representing an organization, then you have five minutes. Is your business, are you saying that your business is your, the organization you're representing?
Yes, Epps Educational Enterprises is what I stand here to represent. And then second.
Excuse me, ma'am. I've just been advised that you aren't allowed to represent a business unless it's an organization.
It's... I don't understand what you mean. It's a nonprofit, and we represent, I and some of my business partners represent Epps Educational Enterprises. We advocate, we provide consulting and training services, and I stand before you very qualified.
I don't question that. Attorney Lilly.
The policy states that you would not be allowed to promote private business ventures. When you got up to, and I think what the confusion lies in, you stated you were with a business, you represented a business. Your comments related to the budget are something separate, and if you are here advocating for an organization, I'm not sure of the credentials of the business as far as whether it's nonprofit or such, but if you're an advocacy organization, the advocacy organization is what is, will get you the five minutes. And I think you probably have three more additional minutes on your two.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll wrap up, because when I came here tonight, I was only going to speak to the concern about the budget, the needs, the budget needs, that it does not authentically represent the individuals who make up this school system. They don't believe their voices have authentically been heard. And finally, I'll speak to legal services. You added it for discussion enclosed tonight. What I'd like for you to consider enclosed tonight, when you discuss your legal services, is whether or not your legal team has the authority to participate in IEP meetings by having a court reporter in those meetings, and then when the transcript is made, it goes to the attorney. You all should know that is a violation of your parents' safeguard rights, that especially in an IEP meeting, attorneys should not be present. And for any IEP team to feel like they don't have the authority to tell your legal team that they are violating these parents' rights rests with you. It needs to be discussed tonight and corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening, Honorable School Board Members. My name is Daryl Turner. I'm the Vice President of the Richmond Education Association. However, this evening, I am speaking as an individual. I come before you all tonight because yesterday, many of my colleagues and myself, we were down at the General Assembly for Lobby Day. We were out there advocating for our various districts across the state to make sure that our students and our staff have the resources that they need and that we make sure that public education is made a priority. I come before you all tonight because as we go into budget season, you know, advocating at the state level, we have to advocate here at the local level too, because here in RPS, we serve students that are some of the best students in the country, and we need to make sure that as we go through this budget session, we make sure that we have a budget that is reflective of all of the needs of our students. Because when we invest in our students, what we're doing is we are investing in our city and in our future. And as you're considering this budget, I want you to consider the other half of the equation. The educators, and when I say educators, I mean teachers, instructional assistants, custodians, bus drivers, anyone who has contact with a child or a student during the day, in my book, is an educator and an advocate for that child. You know, they are your weary weekday warriors, and in many cases, your weary weekend warriors. So I want you to make sure that as you're considering those needs, make sure that you have the adequate funding to make sure that they are compensated in the manner in which they deserve. Because when you invest in your educators, you're investing in your students, you're investing in the district, and you're investing in the city. As a fellow advocate, I say to you all that, you know, we have a lot of work ahead of us to make sure that this budget it does the best that it can for our students. And I'm here to tell you all that I'm willing to walk hand in hand with you all as we advocate to the city and to the state, because we need to let them know that here in RPS, we make great things happen, whether it's through our students, whether it's bargaining, collective bargaining agreements, and we need to let them know that we are advocates. Because as advocates of public education, if we don't care for these students like they are our own children, then we're in the wrong line of business. So I come before you all tonight to say, you know, we are with you. We want to make sure that this budget supports all the needs of RPS, and we hope that you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Next. Please be sure to sign your name and then state your full name.
My name is Elizabeth Waite, and I am an exceptional education teacher at the Richmond Technical Center and a biology teacher for the Kungonis Program. Good evening, School Board Members and Superintendent Kamris. I'm speaking for myself tonight as a science teacher in RPS for nine years. I am disappointed with and very concerned by the limited selection of science courses in the proposed 2324 program of studies. When I say limited selection, I mean that science has the most VDOE-approved courses by far of any core subject, and yet we offer fewer science options to our students than math and history. This has not always been the case. Prior to Superintendent Kamris' tenure at, in RPS, we offered courses such as ecology, genetics, oceanography, and geology, but these were cut as part of the fallout of the graduation credit audit. I was told it was because RPS didn't have the curricula for them, and they would focus on developing curricula for anatomy and astronomy first, and then add more courses back later. This was in April 2019. It is now 2023, and not only have none of the removed courses been added back, we still don't have any curriculum for anatomy or astronomy. For the record, I'm not blaming anyone for this. We all know what has happened in the last several years, and we all had other priorities. But with the official rollout of the 2018 science SOLs, I think now is the chance to add this back to the priority list. Our science students, our students deserve to have more options for studying science. AP classes are still academically inaccessible to many of our students. Between that, the push to move our science classes and our science teachers to middle school, and many schools, several schools still unable to find a physics teacher, many students don't actually have a choice of what science class they get to take in high school. Students who don't pass biology in their freshman or sophomore year are often pushed into an anatomy class as remediation, despite the fact that body systems haven't even been tested on the SOL in almost 10 years and aren't even included in the new standards. And struggles with math keep many students from taking chemistry or physics. I'm asking the school board and academic, to, and the academic office to please add the biology two courses, ecology and genetics, as well as the earth science two courses, oceanography and geography, geology, back to the program of study and assemble teams of RPS teachers to develop curricula for each of these, as well as for the existing anatomy and astronomy classes. With the announcements about new game changer CRISPR gene editing technology and treatments being breaking every couple of months, we need students who understand genetics. With climate change accelerating new mass extinctions, we need students who understand ecology. With the ever-growing need for alternative energy sources from the land and water, we need students who understand geology and oceanography. Most of all, we need students who are excited about and engaged in science. And educational research has long shown that increased student choice leads to increased student engagement and learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Lauren Mir. I do not have a fancy title. I apologize. I'm supporting myself as an individual. I live in the East End, represented by Ms. Shel Burke. Good evening, Honorable School Board Members. I'm a little nervous, so please put up with me a little bit. Before I begin, I want to thank you all for supporting advanced programs investing in our governor schools project impact in space. Specifically, Mr. Jonathan Young for your leadership in ARGS, Ms. Maura White for your leadership in Maggie Walker, Dr. Shonda Mohammed Harris, my apologies, for attending a gifted advisory council meeting. School Board Chair Shel Burke for her continued support in Mind Games, a program that will continue this year. I am reading the statement on behalf of Lynn Plevich, the gifted and talented coordinator for Richmond Public Schools. She has taught in Richmond as a fifth-grade teacher at Red Elementary.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm sorry. I am being advised that you are, you can't make a statement for someone else.
Okay, so one thing I'd like to call out is that in this current budget, I am using Ms. Plevich's name because her, she is being riffed within the budget and is being called out as a academic coordinator and not as a gifted coordinator within Richmond Public Schools. Because of that, I would like a little bit of a berth in this conversation to make sure the school board members understand the position that is being cut in the budget. Is that acceptable?
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, the gifted and talented coordinator for Richmond Public Schools, she has taught fifth grade at Red Elementary, as a space teacher at Broad Rock, Francis Fox. She has led the space team as a space teacher and as their, and has done so for the past five years as their coordinator. The gifted education coordinator has, supports, and runs several impactful programs within Richmond City Schools, including AP, IB, enroll RPS, multiple advanced programs, and is a major regional gifted collaborator representing Region 1 in Virginia. She has presented a, at professional learning conferences, including the National Association for Gifted Children Convention in Denver, for the state at William &amp; Mary, and for VCGA. I know that many people on this board recognize the incredible work our gifted coordinator has done, but I am here today because her work is not being represented or recognized or legitimized in the current budget represented by the superintendent's office. On January 13th, last Friday, we learned that her role was being riffed and was hidden in the budget as an academic coordinator. This budget does not recognize the countless Saturdays and Sundays that our gifted coordinator has spent away from her family in order to make sure that the children in the city of Richmond are represented and advocated for at Maggie Walker and Appomattox. The budget does not account for the countless calls she's answered from parents after hours on weekends, on Sundays, on holidays. MLK Day was yesterday, for instance, to make sure that all of our children are prepared for testing into open high school, into testing for AP courses, into testing for Appomattox Governor School. Lastly, this budget does not take into consideration who will increase the equity of seeing more AP classes in our schools today. I am asking that this vote, this board vote know for right now on this budget amendment until we can recognize the great work our gifted coordinators doing in the school of Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Excuse me. Hey there, everyone. Thank you for having us. My name is Michael Broth. Read, so I don't forget anything. I'm the parent of a student who, until recently, was enrolled at Linwood-Holton Elementary. I'm speaking today to address major concerns with school administration at Holton and more broadly across the district. I think we can all agree that teacher retention is a high priority for a successful school system and one that RPS has struggled with across the district and to an alarming extent at Holton. While pay is obviously a major factor in teachers leaving the school system and the profession altogether, it must be acknowledged that school leadership plays an integral part in ensuring that our current teachers remain willing to teach. I'm a believer in the saying that people don't quit jobs, they quit bosses. Plenty of people remain at jobs they are underpaid for because their work environment is tolerable, if not welcoming. A person's direct supervisor has a massive impact on the quality of their work environment. We need to be seeking out and retaining principals who allow their teachers to thrive, thereby allowing our students to thrive. Conversely, when principals are clearly driving teachers and staff out of their building, Holton, for example, has lost nearly 50 staff members since the current principal took over three years ago. We need to take steps to rectify that situation. We need to understand clearly why teachers and staff have left. We need exit, excuse me, we need exit interviews. We need data on how many staff members have left under their administrators. We need to take action based on the survey the district conducted showing abysmal levels of staff confidence in their administrators. If we're going to hold teachers- If we're going to hold teachers and students to numerical standards, then principals also need to be held to numerical standards. And when those numbers indicate that an administrator is creating a negative climate in the school, then action needs to be taken. As you may be aware, Holton, the Holton community is scheduled to come together at the end of this month to address some of these school specific concerns. I asked this board to ensure that school and district leadership is held accountable for taking actions that will allow the school system to thrive. Thank you for your time and work.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Keisha Cummings. I'm a founder of Tulav LLC. I'm coming here today because I understand that the budget is supposed to be presented to school board members. I had been looking for the budget weeks ago, not necessarily specifically what the superintendent was going to provide, but for something from the non-school board members to go out into the districts, the communities, the schools, to talk to the people that they represent to see what they think should go in a budget, to be very transparent about what went in the former budget and what we're going to do. Because something is not working. He talked about the teachers being it, being burdened. The teachers are burdened. We have the highest dropout rate that we had in years. Crime has gone up. It is our students that are getting younger, that are being killed in these communities. And so I'm asking for us to be attentional when we are setting a budget to change the lives of many. We have to be able to give our students a chance. And we have to be able to give choices. And we need the voices of the community. It's not about, right now, we're in the General Assembly. It's not about Democrat, Republican. It's not about black or white. It is about human and what people need to make a change. Our teachers are tired. Our administration is tired. Our students are looking for answers. And I'm just trying to ask the board to do their due diligence and serve the teachers, the administration, the children, the parents in this community. And please don't go forward without a budget, without the voices of the people who have elected you to serve them. I appreciate each and every one of you. It is not an easy task. And so I just ask if you want to say what's the right thing to walk in love. And everybody deserves love. The slogan is leading with love. We have to lead with love. We have to lead with making a change, not making a career, not making money, making a change for our students. And please be intentional. Thank you. I appreciate you. If you ever need me, I am here. The community is here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Betsy Melbourne and as the previous speaker said, it's budget season. As always, I would like this group to consider a few things, mostly around high school students. We currently do not offer at all a lot of opportunities for our high school students at the high school level. Every year we seem to offer less and less in many ways, especially around CTE. Last meeting, it was proposed that we remove three level three classes from our CTE catalog. At this point, those classes are the ones that we use to certify students so they can move on into actual jobs after high school. A lot of the reasons that students aren't taking those classes right now are four by four schedule and the fact that many of the students who would need to be at level three now would have taken classes during pandemic year when we were virtual, so therefore they did not take those classes. We offer a very, again, we offer a very small percentage of CTE compared to any of our neighbors. The resources in our CTE that we offer for students to have job readiness or to earn and learn skills, again, is very limited. The RTC schedule is still not aligned per with transcript audit required of 2019 to our regular high schools. So students who do CTE classes do miss out on classes at their regular high school level still. The amount of certifications earned by RPS students still lags massively in comparison to our neighbors and throughout the state because we do not offer the resources for these students to obtain the certifications. Every year, we have not invested more in opportunities for our high school students. Maybe this year, this board and administration will make this a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name's Jeannie Bowker. I'm once again asking for your support regarding teacher retention and satisfaction. I noticed in this year's budget proposal, only $100,000 have been allocated for a teacher retention fund to implement proposals from the elusive teacher retention task force. That doesn't seem like enough to implement long lasting systemic reforms to ensure RPS retains high quality and experienced teachers. An increase in pay won't mean much if our teachers with the most experience and thus the highest salaries continue to leave the district. Surely $100,000 is not enough for our RPS to, for example, use a neutral third party to conduct exit interviews, to mandate anonymous 360 degree reviews, to make teacher retention and satisfaction an essential element of a principal's evaluation, to provide an unencumbered 30 minutes for a mandatory lunch period, to supply compensation for covering a class, or to hire a facilitator at every school for equity's sake that has low teacher satisfaction numbers. It's important to make sure that we are listening to what staff and teachers need, especially when we're not hitting the goal teacher retention benchmark established in our strategic plan. It would also help to have an academic calendar already set for next year instead of making teachers and families wait until late in the school year. If we're going to recognize teacher satisfaction survey results and teacher retention numbers as accurate and valid in order to celebrate and model those schools with high numbers such as John Marshall, Ginner Park, JL Francis, Franklin Military, Barack Obama, and Open, so must we express concern and address low teacher and satisfaction numbers at other schools such as Henderson, Swansboro, Fairfield Court, Holton, Cary and Carver. Thank you for providing these multiple data points by which we may objectively obsess teacher retention and satisfaction across the district as opposed to, for example, subjective observations. Lastly, I hope you will urge city council to follow their own policy of using 55.4% of real estate collections to fund our schools when we have a budget surplus. The budget proposal as it stands now is woefully short on funding for the secondary course offerings we should be giving students to enrich their education experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Ann Chan and I have two kids at Holton Elementary. Similar to some of the comments that you've heard tonight, I'm here to speak about teacher satisfaction retention at RPS. But before that, I do want to make clear the message that there is a common thread amongst all of us, right? Like, we believe in the power and the influence of public education, right? And so I think regardless of political affiliations, regardless of our differing perspectives, that is the one thing that binds us and that is the one thing that we should utilize to move forward in addressing teacher satisfaction and retention in RPS. Otherwise, I think we just get distracted and we're unable to then meet the needs of our community. So if I look at my older daughter, three of her last four teachers are no longer at Holton. And when our daughter finishes at Holton, she's going to Henderson after that. The RPS dreams, the dreams for RPS survey results show very similar issues when it comes to teacher satisfaction. So if you look at question seven, which is quote, overall, my school is a good place to work and learn. Both Henderson and Holton have incredibly high teacher response rates. So response rates of 89%, response rates of 82%, which tells me from just a data perspective, right? That there is power in that information. There's power in the voices. And so if Henderson and Holton have teachers who respond that they either strongly agree or they agree to that question seven and that response rate is only 16% for Holton and then 23% for Henderson, again, teachers are telling us that something is wrong, right? And so I balance that with the fact that when I send my kids to school every day, I'm trusting teachers to not only educate them, but then to protect them, right? And so I think we are all frightfully aware of the gun violence issues that occur in our schools across the nation. And so it seems a bit of a conundrum that we center kids to school to teachers who we trust to care and educate them, but then we don't trust the results that they're telling us, the survey results, right? So I'm asking that you all, in an expedient manner, put together a meaningful, a well thought out and equitable plan that is measurable and time oriented to address teacher retention satisfaction RPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chan, did you sign in? I did not see you do that.
I did not.
On the lectern, there should be a pen and a
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Is this solely still the part where we're speaking to budgets or is this for general?
No ma'am, you can make general comments.
Oh, great.
Good evening, all. My first name is Laquita. The last name is Massey. I've spoken before. And so I just wanted to come back again and to reiterate my present position. I wanted to take the opportunity to publicly inform you, the school board, well, you superintendent and the rest of the school board, under the direction, the leadership of your special education director and assistant director and Mr. Ford, the private placement specialist in the IEP team that is refusing to place my autistic son in the appropriate LRE that is identified in his current out of place, out of compliant IEP since 2016. You are trying to push my son out of school with a general diploma, performing four and a half grade levels behind, i.e. reading and math skills on an eighth grade level. You want to push my son out with a general diploma, reading at an eighth grade and doing math on an eighth grade level. You're supposed to be on his college track, no transitional IEP. Meeting was completed along with evaluation that has not been considered. Sad to say that I feel like you and VDOE are complicit in forcing parents to obtain costly legal representation and to having to file due processes for what is by law entitled to these students, but preferably tonight, my son. I have given more than fair warning to correct this matter. I do want to be clear that it benefits me nothing not to complete this process. I will prevail in the due process hearing. I do have to file because no one seems to would like to do their due diligence morally and professionally where it concerns my students. It is unfortunate that you're, is fortunate that you're speaking about budgets because I'm more than sure that you've wasted plenty of money in legal fees with the representation of Nicole Thompson. You've paid more in legal fees representing your interest in not to educate my son than educating my son appropriately. So unfortunate that this is the case. So once again, if you're speaking to budgets, it would do you more justice if you would
30 seconds.
at least cut back your legal fees. Cause I'm not sure what she's getting paid per hour. The last time whispers were said that she was getting paid over 200 to $500 an hour to be represented by RPS. I'm not getting this at all. So if you're talking about budget, start by cutting legal fees and appropriately placing and educating students. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers?
Good evening, honorable school board members and superintendent cameras. My name is Ms. Waller. I'm principal at Bushaw Middle School. I'm here to tell you a story. Okay? There was a former Bushaw scholar that matriculated through our school, did great, had the support of the many programs and resources that were located at Bushaw for not only himself, but also for his family. He had the pleasure of going to applying for and being accepted at Maggie Walker High School, which as we know, extremely rigorous program. As a teacher, I have personally seen a number of my scholars go to specialty schools, including Maggie Walker. And there's no doubt that these individuals get accepted because they're intelligent, they have a strong work ethic, just many things about them that will help them be successful. The one thing, however, that was not in the scholar's favor, being at Maggie Walker, was the level of supports. They're simply at that time, and this was a number of years ago, and obviously I'm not gonna name this scholar. He just didn't have the supports. Now, this was before one to one. This was before we were giving out hotspots. This was before we did all those things for all of our scholars. This scholar was at Walker struggling, not because he wasn't intelligent, not because he didn't have the work ethic, but simply because there were not the supports in place. So when I come to you as a principal, I'm also coming to you also as someone that is currently on the gifted advisory council, someone that has been on the advisory board for Richmond Community High School, someone that is not only been a gifted scholar in Richmond Public Schools, but my own son has participated in specialty school programs. So I'm coming to you because as of tonight, it was made aware to me that you're considering lifting our coordinator for programs of gifted and talented services. And what I want to explain to you is the reason why that scholar, my former scholar from Bushaw Middle School, is now on a full ride at Longwood University is because the, the program director came to me and we put together those same supports, not only that for that scholar, but for other scholars. Not only did she pick the scholar up and take him back to school, not only did she round up money to get this scholar a laptop when there were no Chromebooks, not only did she get that child wifi and showed the parent how to do that, do some services that were kind of in the community. They're just things that awesome, dedicated, caring individuals do. And I want the school board to reconsider this particular position because I need you to see what's going on beyond the, the position. I need you to understand what's going on with the person. And if you have any particular questions about what I've seen outside of this one incident, I really would like for you to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Any other speakers? All right, that will conclude our public comment portion of this meeting. Okay. We are now at four point zero one. Receive the superintendent's FY twenty-four estimate of needs.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. I am delighted to present to the board this evening our proposal for our FY twenty-four budget. Before getting into the details, I did want to just provide a quick refresher for the board and for the public about the budget process. It is somewhat complicated. So as a quick reminder, the process begins with the introduction of a proposed budget, which we are doing this evening. Then, of course, the school board will review and make whatever adjustments it deems necessary. By February, the board will then approve its budget, send it off to the mayor. The mayor then incorporates it into his budget, which then gets sent to the city council, and the council will adopt their budget in May. If there is a significant difference in terms of the funding that we are allocated ultimately by the council, then the board will consider some adjustments to its approved budget. And then in June, we will finally adopt a budget. The adopted budget is the budget that we actually operate the school system off of. And so, as you can see, we have many months of discussion and debate and decision-making on the budget tonight is just the beginning. Next, I want to just clarify particularly for the public. The budget we're talking about is for fiscal year twenty-four. That begins on July first, twenty twenty-three. So this coming July and runs all the way through the end of June, twenty twenty-four. So everything we're talking about tonight would not be effective until July first. One more bit of clarification. We actually have two different budgets that we work with and we will discuss tonight. The first is the operating budget. This is everything such as teacher salaries, buses, books, science equipment, and so on. The second is the capital improvement or CIP budget. This is the budget that funds school renovation. I'm sorry, not renovation, maintenance and upgrades, things like roofs, boilers, HVAC systems, things of that nature. All right, turning to the proposed operating budget. First, I just wanted to acknowledge and appreciate all of the board members that responded to our previous chair's request, Dr. Harris Mohammed, to submit their priorities. I think just about everybody did so. And we have worked very hard to try to reflect those priorities in this budget. In short, there are five areas of new investments. First, compensation, fully funding all of the collective bargaining agreements that we reached earlier this year. Additional supports for student wellness to address mental health and physical health. Additional support for our English learner students. This is something we have talked about quite a bit as a board. Then saving some critical positions that are currently funded by the American Rescue Plan. That's federal one-time money that will go away at the end of the summer of twenty-four. We need to begin to move them over to our operating budget so that we can save them for the long term. And then a host of other priorities and obligations that we have. The overall proposed increase is thirty-five point three million. The lion's share of that, twenty-four point two million, is for teacher and staff pay increases. You'll see there the student wellness investments come in at one point nine million, English learner support at one point two million, saving the positions from the American Rescue Plan, six point eight million, and then the other priorities at two point five million. In addition, we are proposing one point three million in central office cuts to offset some of the new expenditures to bring, again, the total proposed new expenditure to thirty-five point three million. A bit of detail about each of these buckets. First, the teacher and compensation, teacher and staff compensation increases. You'll see the breakdown there by employee group. The teacher unit, six percent raise comes in at just shy of eighteen million dollars. The instructional assistant unit, ten point six percent raise comes in at one point five million. The school nutrition services unit and the care and safety unit have a number of different employees at different levels. And so the increases are variable, but you can see the total amounts for those costs. And then finally, all staff who have decompressed salary schedules, and you can see the list there. We've worked very hard as the school system over the last five years to decompress most of our employees' salary schedules, would all receive their typical one point one seven percent step increase. Just a quick word about teacher increases. I'm enormously grateful to this board and to prior boards for their support of teacher pay, along with the mayor and city council for helping fund these increases. You can see the increases from FY nineteen on. If the proposed six percent plus the step is implemented for fiscal year twenty-four, the compounded raise for teachers since FY eighteen will be thirty percent. That means the average teacher pay has gone from fifty-two thousand to nearly sixty-eight thousand. And if we're able to continue to afford the minimum three percent raises in FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six per our collective bargaining agreement with our teachers, the compounded increase will go up to forty-one percent since FY eighteen. Obviously, we always want to do more, and we'll continue to push to do more. But I do believe it is fair to say these are truly historic increases for our teachers. Moving to the next category, student wellness. Again, one point nine million of new investments. There are really three buckets here. One, in response to a lot of feedback from the board and from our schools, adding in a crisis support team to the Department of Culture and Climate. This small team would respond to crises as they arise, providing day-of support along with follow-up support. Right now, the climate and culture team do this work, but because they're doing that work all the time, they have less bandwidth to do the tier-one work, the work that we want all of our schools to benefit from to ensure that troubling behaviors don't manifest in the first place. So by adding this special crisis team, the goal would be to allow the climate and culture team to do their broader work supporting schools. Second, additional positions to focus on attendance, mental health, and safety specifically. Nine additional positions. That's five social workers, one at With, one at Carver, one at Marsh, one at MLK, and one at River City. Two additional care and safety associates, one at With and one at Thomas Jefferson, and then a counselor and an ICC at RAS. And then the third bucket in the wellness category is a big new investment in athletics. Again, I want to recognize that a number of school board members and our schools have raised this as a key priority, not just for our students' physical health, but for their mental health and academic achievement as well. These funds would go towards having a full-time athletics coordinator, separating it from our health and PE work. Two grounds maintenance personnel to keep our football fields, baseball fields, soccer fields, et cetera, in good shape, along with about half a million for new uniforms, equipment, some minor maintenance upgrades. We'll get to the capital upgrades later. And increases in terms of coaching stipends to ensure that we're able to fill all of our coaching positions. The next bucket is English learner support. We are proposing additional ESL teachers. Those locations will be determined based on where our greatest need is going into next year, along with three ESL coaches to help train teachers to support students for whom English is their second, third, or sometimes even fourth language. An additional counselor for the Welcome Center to support screening and placing newcomer students, and funds for teacher training and to help general education teachers get their ESL endorsements. The next bucket is saving the positions that are currently funded by the American Rescue Plan. These are not all of those positions, but a significant portion of them. You'll see sixteen bus drivers, eight counselors, eighteen custodians, eleven nurses, two psychologists, and three social workers. In addition, the thirty RVA staff. As a reminder, the board voted to make the Richmond Virtual Academy a school of record. It has been approved by the VDOE for the fall of twenty-three. And so we need to move those positions off of federal funds into our operating budget. And then there's a number of other priorities that the board has articulated and some obligations that we simply must meet. Per the board's request, a deputy clerk. Per board's recent action to rename Benford with Ginter Park and Cary, funds for new signage, uniforms, et cetera. Funds for a teacher retention fund to assist with any recommendations that the task force makes. And then last year, the board voted to increase the number of seats at our governor's schools and regional schools. So you'll see those here, building on what was approved last year. And then we have two transfers. One for Title One. In short, we have three new Title One schools, but the Title One pie hasn't increased. And so the same amount of money is spread across a larger number of schools. And so in an effort to hold schools harmless, we would transfer some funds to the operating budget. And then for Patrick Henry, as our revenue increases, they get a share of that increase. And so you'll see that listed. And then finally, we are projecting, based on Dominion's projections of increased energy costs, an additional one point three eight million for utilities. As I shared before, we are also proposing one point three million in central office cuts. These are never easy, but I continue to work extremely hard, as I know the board does as well, to hold our schools harmless, which we have continued to do. Since FY eighteen, we have actually cut one hundred and nineteen positions from the central office in order to hold our schools harmless. The positions are listed here. I do want to address some comments about our gifted and advanced programming. I want to be a hundred percent clear, excuse me, a hundred percent clear that we not only are maintaining that programming, but will increase it. Unfortunately, we have to cut some positions and reorganize even more if we are going to be able to afford some of these new investments that I just listed for our schools. We also cut all central office professional development, except for anything that was legally mandated, cut some temporary services contracts and some other non-critical software and other items. Turning to revenue to balance the budget, we have approximately two million dollars in our fund balance. That's the amount of funds that were left over at the end of last fiscal year. That was FY twenty-two. We anticipate about six million dollars in additional revenue from the state that is based on the governor's budget and VDOE's calculations based on that budget. Of course, that number could change over the course of the next couple of months with General Assembly action, but that is what we anticipate at this point. And that means our proposed request of the city would be twenty-eight point three million dollars of new revenue. I will note that is more than we have ever received from the city over the last five years. Though the city has invested quite a bit, typically, the investment falls in the fifteen million range. So this would be a significant increase. We did have a small loss in revenue from some other sources, which totaled one million. So you'll see the proposed revenue increase at thirty-five point three million to balance the budget. Turning now to the CIP budget, we are proposing a nine point five million dollar investment. The two biggest drivers here are athletics to complement our operating budget investments and some structural improvements. But there are also, as you'll see, playgrounds, paving, HVAC, and electrical investments as well. The following two slides list all of the proposed investments by school and category. And that brings me to the conclusion of the presentation. Again, I want to thank the board for all of their input over the last couple of months. And thank you as well to our schools and our community that have also shared their priorities. I always wish we could do more, but I am prayerful that we will be able to at least do what we have shared this evening. Without, I'll pause, and I'm happy to take any and all questions.
Okay. Nicole Jones, Ms. Jones, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Camaras, for your presentation. I have a lot of questions, but I'm not, I know my six minutes is not going to allow me to get them all out. But a couple of things that stand out for me is where a lot of these new investments, and I think it would be helpful if we could get a breakdown to just say that we're adding crisis support. It's like, what does that mean? I think we need a deeper understanding of what it is that is, like, how can we be able to track the outcomes? Because what is, what I'm, what I'm seeing kind of as a recurring theme is, you know, here's the investment or here's what the request, but we're really not addressing what's not working. And so really being able to let us see what's not working. Why do we continue to add bodies to things that are not working? So I think that that would be helpful to really get a better understanding across the district. For instance, with the English learners, I think I heard earlier about, you know, getting the community engaged and the community involved. We have the Latino Task Force, and we haven't even made our recommendations yet. So I'm wondering, where did this number come from? I know we've had discussion, but we haven't specifically made an ask yet. So again, I'm grateful for the investments, but it also does not speak to the needs because that task force alone is the community. And until we bring those back, we can't just say, hey, we're going to invest in nine more teachers, or we need to invest in coaches. To do what? And to really address what it is that we're not doing. So I'd love to see a little bit more of a breakdown or, again, the systems that are not working. I don't want us to just continue to keep adding positions. I want to be able to see how these positions are actually going to make a change so that when we are speaking to our constituents and to folks who are asking questions, we can show the difference. And right now, just adding positions, I'm not saying we're just adding positions, but it's not clear. And so we do need input, whether it's from schools, principals, community members, to also be able to share what their thoughts are. And it said board requests or board recommendations. But again, just to speak to the task force alone, I know for a fact we haven't turned in anything. So, thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Certainly, looking forward to having some of those deeper discussions. As it pertains to the task force, since the task force hasn't finished its work yet, I don't know what the recommendations will be, but obviously had to provide a budget. So this was a starting point based on what I had heard from schools. I'm happy to modify as necessary based upon what the task force ultimately decides. Additionally, I will note there are certainly changes that are being made internally to make sure that things that are working, I get the resources that they need and things that aren't. I get the resources that they need and things that aren't, um, those resources are shifted to other things. Um, I have tried very hard not to cut things uh from schools, which is where the lion's share of our funds are. If the board was open to making some of those cuts, um, then I would certainly be willing um to put some on the table uh to reposition some of those um, those expenditures. Um, that was not something that I had thought the board was, was open to at this point, but certainly um if, if the board is, can certainly look at that.
Follow up, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm not recommending that the board cut anything. What I'm recommending is that we have a clear sense and understanding of what's not working and the district-wide approach that is going to happen to match these funds that are coming or that we are asking. What is the district-wide approach? And I would love to see it broken down. If it's a new investment, I want to understand how it is going to touch a student and how these students are going to benefit. So we just got kind of like, and I know this is just an overview right now, but this was kind of like a general of, you know, we're going to do this, we're going, I want to see some concrete um information and I want to see the supports or the teams or the, again, district-wide approach that is going to happen to implement these new investments because this is a lot of money and we want to be able, we don't want to be sitting here again next year saying we need more money because we couldn't do this, but we have twenty-five positions that we've added. So that's, I'm just trying to avoid that. And I really think that that is something that we owe the community this budget season. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One observation and one affirmation. I'm going to work in reverse order or backwards and specifically, let me affirm what I heard my colleague from the ninth speak to. Uh, previewed my same critique at the preceding meeting in the context of Dreams for RPS. My contention, at the risk of putting words in Nicole's mouth, not terribly unlike what I just heard uh from my colleague, and specifically, we have a strategic plan, i.e. Dreams for RPS, with very specific tangible metrics. And those metrics relate to five priorities and a series of goals. Said goals and priorities pertain to all those different, all these different reports that we regularly receive. Teacher retention, enrollment, teacher satisfaction, accreditation. In last, last meeting, chronic absenteeism. My point is to say, uh, not unlike my colleague from the ninth, I've, I mean, look, we're going to spend this year, this fiscal year, more than a half a billion dollars. And my contention is uh most regrettably, we're not anywhere close to achieving those, those goals and or those metrics that we identified. So uh, I, I think what I heard, well, let me just speak for Jonathan. What I would like to see us do is something more akin to a zero-based budget approach, not unlike when twenty nineteen, when we really took a deep dive pertinent to uh dollars that were spent preceding the superintendent's new proposal or estimate of needs and, and hope that we'll do that through the lens of Dreams for RPS. That's, that's the affirmation. The observation, the observation relates to what I'm going to respectfully characterize as a real hole in the budget contingent on if this board agrees to the collective bargaining agreement. Uh, yours truly was the only person on this stage that voted no relevant to collective bargaining. But my point is to say that if you, if this board does adopt the collective bargaining terms that the REA administration arrived at, relevant to teachers being compensated for when they assume students from other classrooms, even if, even if you assume what I'm going to characterize as a, as a very conservative estimate, i.e. ten percent of the time. My math is arguably it's fourteen four million, it's fourteen point four million dollars. Not unlike my affirmation a moment ago, previewed this concern at our last, last meeting. Look, this was a significant enough concern that our teachers rightfully brought this to the attention of the administration in the context of the collective bargaining agreement. And said that of all the things that the REA was going to negotiate, this was one of the principal concerns for obvious reasons. My point is to say, I don't think it's realistic to think that that concern or problem, everyone to characterize it, is going to go away. Arguably, it's only going to accelerate for all kinds of reasons that I don't have enough time to address now. But if that assessment is correct, then we're arguably talking about a really significant new expenditure. And that's okay, but I think we all need to be wide-eyed about it and appreciate, again, if Jonathan's math is correct, that could mean, even if you assume a very conservative estimate, i.e. ten percent of our instructors' time, fourteen four, fourteen, fourteen point four million dollars a year. And right now, that's not incorporated in the budget. So colleagues, I would implore us to go into, one, the collective bargaining conversation, and two, this budget wide-eyed uh relevant to the proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Camaras, I have a couple of questions. Um, a few weeks ago, I requested a list of possible positions that would be riffed or positions that were funded um out of our monies that we would not be receiving in twenty twenty-four or at the end of this year, going into twenty twenty-four. And um, the board has been um made aware through emails and probably phone calls from many staff that there are several positions that are being riffed. And so we did not receive, or I did not see any information on particular positions being riffed. When it comes to um opportunities for our students through programs such as our gifted program, space, and other gifted programs, we were not informed as a school board that such an important program and ideas of providing opportunities of equitable academics for students, particularly our minority students, are suggested to be riffed or removed from RPS academic program. I am against that as a board member. Um, I, I think that just eliminating that program with, with no solution is unacceptable. I also believe that there should have been data provided to the school board um that justified the plan to adjust, the plan to revise, the plan to change, the plan to delete any part of that gifted program. So we would, we could have been prepared as a school board to have, to have that discussion. We are not prepared to really um clearly have that discussion because we don't have the data to reflect that we don't need that position, which concerns me. I hope in this budget, we can look at what has been accomplished and what has not been accomplished transparently within the Dreams for RPS strategic plan and how our twenty seventeen MOU has made improvements. And so Mr. Young spoke to that plan, that strategic plan. And all, and, and what that means is that, or what I'm suggesting is that we actually spend some time and diving into what has been achieved, what has not been achieved, what needs to be funded and what does not need to be funded through that plan. And that's okay, that's an okay conversation to have because we may need to adjust funding to support some things that have not been met. Our data demonstrates that there are some things that are not working, but also we have data to demonstrate that there are some things that are working. And so we need to really take a deep dive into what that is. We are scheduled to have a budget meeting on January the twenty-fifth, I believe. And then we have a meeting, I'm sorry, February the sixth, thank you. And then we have after February, so February the sixth, school board meeting and budget public hearing. And then on February the twentieth, school board meeting and budget approval. I think it behooves us, if this, if we are really taking this budget seriously and we have not had the opportunity as a board with the community to dive into the budget, I would like to see us add another budget work session just for the budget. And I'm, I'm going to say, mention something that may be uncomfortable, but no, um, but just a public hearing on the budget. Like, if there are concerns or challenges that the public may have, send us emails, send the superintendent, chief of staff emails, but let this addition, additional budget work session just be about the budget. On this, on this schedule that I have is February the sixth and um, in this month, and January, excuse me, February the sixth and February the twentieth. Um, January the twenty-fifth, there is a budget work session here at six o'clock.
And February the first.
And February.
And Jan, February fifteenth.
So one, two, excuse me. Three, four.
Excuse me, Madam Clark.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be so kind as to give us that list so that people that are viewing can also hear those dates? And does this also include the meeting with city council that we're having, which is public?
Has that meeting been confirmed, January the twenty-sixth?
I would defer to Ms. Rizzi.
So wh- while we're referring that to um Chairwoman Rizzi, I wanted to finish my statement. So even though we have on the calendar that I have um a school budget work session, January the twenty-fifth, on the calendar that I have, something might have been revised, school board budget work session, February the first, school board meeting and budget pub, budget public hearing, February the sixth. I, I, and then February the twentieth, school board meeting and budget approval. There is still, even, even with those dates, I don't think there is still in a um enough time for the public to give us feedback and then come back and make adjustments um as we should. But I would, um, whatever the school board decides to recommend, of course, I will um adhere to that. But I'm concerned that when it comes to these, these very important positions that provide direct services and additional services to our students in the gifted program, we have no data to, to um make a request to riff those positions or remove that program. The next question, how does crisis support?
Dr. Harris Mohammed, I believe.
That was my turn?
Yeah, Ms. Rizzi.
Okay, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. Can I finish this one question? Is that okay? How does crisis support look and what is the vision for adding those positions? And then I'll send the last question about reorganizing the community engagement office to fit the crisis team. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Uh, Ms. Dor.
Thank you. Um, so uh, first of all, I want to thank Superintendent Camaras um for the summary of the school board concerns and for the um response to those concerns. Um, so thank you for listening and um taking a first stab. I think there's revisions that we're all going to need to do, but I want to acknowledge that um I'm appreciative of you taking all of our feedback and trying to get something together that works. Um, I um have three questions. Um, one is, what do we think the city allocation is actually going, is going to be, or what are you hearing around the city allocation? Um, two, I had asked at the last board meeting for an update on the incremental asks that um our board approved last year, things like um additional Appomattox seats, additional Maggie Walker seats, et cetera. I see that the continuity of some of that is in this budget, but I don't see the continuity of all of that is in this budget. So, for example, the pilot of the dual immersion program, um, I wanted to just, I want to make sure to Ms. Jones's point that we don't start a bunch of new initiatives that we then stop one year later. So um, you know, I think we should, we can, we can and should debate whether we should have done all of those projects last year, but um, but I also think continuity is important. Um, similarly, um, I would um echo the statements of some of my colleagues um around just doing a deeper dive of the new initiatives that you're proposing um so that we can understand and to Ms. Jones's point, what are the, you know, what are we, what are we getting out of those? And what are we, um, what are the outcomes that we can measure? So I um appreciate her comments there. Um, and then finally, um, I was curious about the twenty-five percent increase in utilities rate. That's a really large increase. And um, I was wondering if you could just speak to that and also um see if there's an opportunity to um, as part of this budget season, explore energy servicing contracts, energy-saving contracts to mitigate the um, the pretty substantial increase that Dominion is charging us. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Camaras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just very briefly, um, on those questions, I don't know what the city allocation will be. Um, I don't think we've ever gotten more than, I believe nineteen million. Just as context. Um, and as a reminder, just the collective bargaining agreements is a twenty-four million dollar increase. So um, I just want folks to keep that in mind. Um, we'll have an update on all those incremental asks, I think on the twenty-fifth, we'll have all of that. Um, I'm not sure about the detail on the utilities, but we'll get that as well.
Thank you. Ms. White and then Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Camaras um for the, the presentation of your budget. But I do have uh questions and a couple of comments. Uh, my question is, what strategic budget implications have you planned to ensure all RPS students, including the special population, are provided with the education that they need? And I want to elaborate some more on that because looking at this budget, um, some of these things, I know I did not vote for uh school renaming. Um, and I can do away with more governor seats. Um, because I am really into the requirements that the schools need. I have went to my schools and I'm seeing that you are saying George Washington Carver, uh, they need uh another counselor. And I've been asking for almost a year now. George Washington Carver needs reading interventions, math interventions, behavior specialists, and we haven't received them yet. We're coming close to SOFs again this year. And next year, Fox will be a Title One school. They also need coaches and a behavior specialist. Raz, I see that you have an ICC, which they already have hired for that. They need coaches. And we still need assistant principals. And I'm not sure why I have to almost beg for requirements for reading interventions and math interventions when we have seen the percentage of our letters raped here. And I'm not understanding, because I did also go into RPS, your grants management, and I looked at the ARP and the Ursa plans. And adding, those are not the only budgets that we have, our operating budget and the CIP budget. Looking at the budget that I added up, we had over a billion dollars. I would like to see the breakdown of those from the ARP, the Ursa plans from down to this budget. This budget needs improvement. We cannot just say that the basic things like naming our schools, we're not, we're not even focusing on the needs of our students, the literacy. And here we are, six months away, almost again, to SOL. Are we going to meet Dreams for RPS? With no reading interventions and no math interventions? With no reading interventions and no math interventions and no coaches again this year? So, I think this needs to be looked at again. And someone said, maybe we have another meeting, but some things need to be added in this. And I'm not for riffing anyone unless this is vacancy. Every year, we riff, wanna riff, three or four people. And someone had said that this was, I actually know who this is. And if this person has been here and done it effectively for so many years, why are we riffing them to give the job to someone else who may not even know the job? Who is supposed to take and do this job effectively? And my other question is, how do you choose to riff different individuals? Because this is about five or six, last year, we had a couple. How do their names come up? How do you choose them?
Thank you. Mr. Camaras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mrs. White. On your last question, a, a number of different factors go into play. I think that conversation might be best foreclosed, given the personnel nature of it. I'm not sure what you're referencing in terms of a billion dollars. That is not the amount that we have. We do have additional funds, certainly from Title I, II, III, individual disabilities in Education Act, our school nutrition program, which is based on federal reimbursement and such. Those are all grants that we typically address when they're up for renewal in the spring. Certainly, we have the American Rescue Program funding. But the earlier funding cares and Essers, Esser has almost entirely been spent up to this point. So certainly happy to talk more about the ARP. But again, I'm not sure where you're coming to the $1 billion number. Then last, I don't disagree, Mrs. White. I would not put more funds into governor schools and some of the other things. Of course, I'm bound by the, the will of the board, and the board voted to do so, and so I'm trying to fulfill those obligations. If the board would like to change course, the board certainly can do so. I'm just trying to put funds towards things that the board has voted to do.
Thank you. Ms. White has indicated she has a follow-up.
I still have the question I wanted to know is, are we providing the education that all students need? I'm looking at your breakdown and I'm still questioning why at this year from last year, I'm still requesting reading interventions, coaches, math coaches, math interventions, and behavior specialists. And we know that these are the issues in our schools and we're not focusing on them.
If I'm.
Mr. Camaras.
Yes, I, I would respectfully disagree, Mrs. White. We actually have a rather significant investment in reading coaches, math coaches, reading specialists, and I'm happy to pull all that information for Carver specifically. Look, I would love to triple the number of reading specialists. But again, I want to drive everyone's attention to the fact that a $35 million increase, you know, I'm asked to put forward, within reason, a budget that outlines our critical needs. We will all advocate vigorously, but it is unlikely that we will end up with 35 million in new revenue. So, in all transparency and all honesty, I actually think the conversation we're gonna end up having is, of all the things that we put on the table, actually, which are the ones that we're actually going to do? And so, the only way to invest more in one thing at this point, frankly, is to stop investing in other things. And I am happy to do that, and I take Ms. Jones and Mr. Young's point to heart, definitely. But that is why, again, I want to reiterate, I have cut nearly 120 positions out of the central office so that we can have those positions, reading specialists, more ESL teachers, more bus drivers and so on, supporting kids directly. But at the end of the day, we, we can't add some additional investments without taking away some other things. And quite frankly, over 90% of what we spend is staff, almost entirely in our schools. And so I think that is the tension that we're gonna have to grapple with.
Thank you. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Camaras, for this first read for us with the budget. I have several questions, and I would like to go back, if I may, Madam Chair, regarding the posted dates, because I know regarding the budget, because some of us is, and I know also in District Seven, we have a meeting plan as well. So with the upcoming budget meetings that we have, I ask that, if it's already on RPS Direct, I didn't see it. And I think I keep up with that. So is it possible to, Mr. Camaras, we can have those dates so that everybody reads RPS Direct daily? So if parents and community supporters can see that. And may I ask, just take up some of my minutes so she could read the dates, so we can do that at the end. Madam Clerk. She just sent an email? She just sent it?
Yes, ma'am, and it's also posted in the school board meeting and committees, scheduled, you all approved on the last school board meeting.
All right, I understand that, and I thank you so much for that. I just wanted those who are in the audience and those who are listening, who are taking notes, just to hear those dates again. The more we hear it, the more it will be, it will enable us to show up and show out. And I think that's what the request is, to make sure we have hard representative, rapid representation from our students as well as family members. So if we can hear that at some point. And until, are you ready? If not, I'll go to the next one.
Give me one second.
Sure. All right, so what I would like to know, number one, to post that on RPS Direct, the dates. And number two, the gifted and talented position. You stated earlier, Mr. Camaras, that the position there would be academic coordinator. Well, my question is, would this person continue with the gifted and talented program and additional assignment? Or is this a total assignment altogether? And my third question is, I too would like to see, not the names, but the positions of persons that are to be considered. Because this gifted and talented is one that I would like to keep, but there may be others as well. I don't know what they all are. So if we can, as, as it was already mentioned, I think by Dr. Harris Mohammed, if we can see that listing, that would be great. Then my next question is, I understand what Mrs. White is stating regarding the reading and math interventionists. I think every school has had for years at least one or two. We really need one per grade level, if not more, to be realistic. But I know funding is a difference. And maybe we'll hear this when we hear our general assembly update regarding the literacy person per school, if general assembly passes that. But we need that and then some. So, I, I understand what you're saying, and it is gonna make a difference. And we're not gonna get there until we have more support. One or two per schools isn't enough, but I know that we don't have funding. And I'm just, I'm glad the general assembly has before them the opportunity to vote on that literacy piece, but I still think it's piecemeal. And my last question is, for our meeting with city council, if it is concerned, confirm, Madam Chair. I don't know what the full purpose of the meeting is, but I'm looking at something we've talked about at length in terms of our football fields, our track fields. We know that our playgrounds, many of our children, students don't have the opportunity to go outside and play after school or on the weekends. And that also does support the mental health and the socialization and the emotional piece. So my question is, I don't know what the full agenda is for the twenty-sixth, but will there be a conversation or can we add to a conversation where it is the city could help support us, maybe through POCs and REC? I know at one time years ago, POCs and REC did pretty much handle programs, we did it together. So it may be an opportunity to go back and then we can put that money from POCs and REC and put it back to hiring another reading specialist for each school. Because we're talking about how many millions of dollars? So, that's, that's all I have. I just want to hear from Madam Clerk, if she's ready.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
We will have on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, 2023, at 6:00 PM, our first budget workshop. Our second budget workshop will be Wednesday, February the first, 2023, at 6:00 PM. On Monday, February the sixth, which is a standing school board meeting night, we will have the official budget hearing within that meeting, scheduled to begin around 6:30 PM. And then on Wednesday, February the fifteenth, 2023, at 6:00 PM, we will have a budget work session. All of these will be held here at Martin Luther King Junior Middle School.
And then we approve on the twentieth? Is that correct?
I'll defer to Mr. Camaras.
Okay, thank you.
I believe we are, but I will reconfirm.
Can we add to that listing once the list is, if it is confirmed with city council? Because I think it's important that our community also knows we have to work with what we're given. As we know, we don't have that authority. So the more we talk to the people above us, per se, that hold the purse string, city council and general assembly, and at the federal level, those, that's where we get our funds. So I, I would love to see a house full on the twenty-sixth as well, if that is confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. I see you, Ms. Gibson. Before we take Ms. Gibson's questions, I do want to say that all of you have indicated that you're interested in a meeting with city council. I think it's Ms. Gibson who requested a date in February. Everyone else said that the twenty-sixth is a possibility. Councilperson Lynch has indicated that the meeting would be at around 6:00 PM. And I believe everyone said that that would work or they could make that work. And so I will confirm after this meeting with her that that meeting can take place. She has sent me a draft agenda, which I will forward to each of you as she just sent it before this meeting. So I will forward that to each of you as soon as possible. Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, but this is always my favorite time of the year, but also the time when I tend to, I mean, I, I feel like we have so much opportunity and I, and I just, it's just so critical that we put our resources where the need is the highest. I, I believe my colleague, Ms. Dor, asked a question about the city funding, and I just want to, one, ensure that if it is true that, you know, that city council adopted an ordinance that would require a certain, probably 55% of, of property tax revenue allocated to schools. If this budget does not include that full amount, that the administration provide the board with recommendations for the additional amount. If it's, you know, what, whatever that amount is. So that's my first. So basically that we, we put our needs out that fully match what we are entitled to have based on that ordinance. Looking at the budget holistically, I think, you know, I, I want to focus on the three things that I think are just the most critical things that we need to address as a district. One is safety. You know, this year, we've had some highly publicized issues that, from a safety standpoint. And I want to ensure that we have put all of the resources that are necessary to ensure that these types of issues do not happen again. So if that requires more funding for professional development to ensure that students aren't wandering off during the school day, if that requires more money for operations and, and capital improvement funding to ensure that, that alarms are working and so forth. To me, that is mission critical, that, that needs to be included on the budget. The second thing that I think really needs to be considered is, is teacher retention. So today, this afternoon, we received an, an email from a teacher who was courageous to come forward. And she said, look, we have been giving bonuses to hire new teachers. Where is the, where, where's, where's the appreciation for the teachers that have been here? And so I am thankful, Ms. Adasko said that she would put forward a proposal for some type of compensation so that we are truly trying to keep teachers. You know, and whether that be teachers over, who've been here for over 10 years or what have you. But I, I, I would welcome that proposal to be put forward. Secondly, I, I want to re-discuss the opportunity for incentives for staffing in the schools with the highest level of needs. You know, Carver comes to mind, many students in my district attend Carver. And this is a school with a high level of teacher turnover. And, and, and the students in that building have a high level of need. And so we, we throw around the word equity quite a bit. If, if it's, if we can try to retain folks in those buildings, you know, by, by putting additional financial incentives in place, I would, I, I think it's high time that we look at doing that. The third thing in regarding teacher retention has to do with the substitute teachers. And I understand in collective bargaining that we have adopted, we are finally going to be, you know, paying teachers for when they use their lunch breaks or if they're using a planning period. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear on where that funding is in this budget. I, I didn't see it allocated. And I want to know, you know, paying the teachers the $50, the $400, whatever it is, that's great. But I also think we need to address the bigger problem, which is, for some reason, we don't have enough subs. For some reason, we're not, we don't have others who can do the work. And so I, I'm, I'm wondering if we also need to allocate additional money for raises and substitute teachers, raises for long-term teachers, whatever, to, to address the problem that is clearly a, a significant one. And then the third thing is chronic absenteeism. So in our last meeting, I asked the question, how much money are we losing because, because we, we have students that are not showing up to school? And so I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that that question can be answered today. And so to that end, I want to make sure that we have enough money for transportation. I noticed that there is a reduction in transportation or basically it's been taken out of all the individual school budgets. So I'm hoping to get clarity on that. And I, I just want to ensure that, again, it looked like there was even a reduction in, 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 in attendance services, about $100,000. And I'm wondering where, you know, why that was a drop in, in that budget line item? Because ultimately, we need to make sure that our kids are in their schools. The last thing, and I will be very brief, looking at the capital improvement plan, I want to again make sure we're looking at equity. I did not see very many spends items south of the James. And you know, I'm saying this from a person from North Side, but it, to me, there, there was a lack of equity there. And I, and I have asked this before, as we are looking at that, I, I think it's look, it's very helpful to look in the context of what all of the needs are. Because as much as I want to repay the tennis court, I want to make sure that we have working HVAC. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. All right. Mr. Camaras, do you have a response?
Look, I, I would like to do all those things too, truly. And if, if the board would like to choose some of those things over some of the items that I put forward, I am certainly open to that. It is a challenge to meet all of our needs, given the pie that we have. As a reminder, I asked for $22 million last year, and this board reduced that to 16 million. So I'm doing my very best to try to get as much as I possibly can for students and for teachers. We, we have increased staff pay more than any school division in the region. We've increased subpay to be the highest in the region. So we have certainly made a, a great deal of progress on many of these fronts. I am certainly opening, open to doing more. I just struggle with where we would fund those things. And so that, that is the, that is the key challenge before. And so that, that is the, that is the key challenge for us. One thing I do want to note, you had mentioned that transportation was reduced. We just aggregated all of the individual school transportation lines into one central line to make the paperwork a lot easier for our schools, so that when they do field trips, they don't have to go through all the rigmarole of billing against their individual school. But none of that has been reduced. All schools will be able to do everything that they have been doing in the past.
Thank you. Ms. White, and then I'd like to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. I just had a, a statement, maybe a question to what you had just stated. It seems like to me, like we have to have such a fixed amount. I'm believing in that we put everything on the plate that we need, even if it's a hundred million, and take it to the city council and advocate for it, because it is time for our children. They deserve what they need to make them successful in schooling and their learning. I'm not trying to cut this person, that person, to equal out to thirty thousand, twenty thousand. I think that this board needs to put everything that we need and see what we can get on the amount for our children in Richmond Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. White.
If I may, it is certainly within the purview of the board to put forward a one hundred million dollar ask of the city. This is just a proposal, but you all decide what the budget is. So if the board would like to put forward a much more significant request, that is certainly within the purview of the board.
Thank you. So I have a few questions, and then I will go to Ms. Jones next. Okay. You know, I don't know that I see a lot of evidence here of, you know, you all going through and doing a really fine-tooth audit of our programs and services, identifying the ones that maybe aren't getting us a return and cutting those, or reorganizing, perhaps, services so that they are better suited to, you know, get the results that we're looking for. Instead, what I see here more is adding more of what we have. And obviously, what we have, you know, there are some shortcomings. We're not getting where we need to be. And so I'm not sure I see enough evidence here of you all having gone through the entire portfolio of services and, and supports we provide, and eliminating those, or at least adjusting those that aren't necessarily working well. I think that's a way to identify places we could cut and then, you know, resee or rethink how we address some of the, the issues that we have. For example, you know, the crisis team, you know, this is mentioned here, we don't have a lot of detail. And this kind of hearkens to what Ms. Jones has already expressed. We don't know exactly what these people will do, where, what are their duties when there are, aren't really active crises going on? Are they just sitting in their offices waiting for crises? Or are there, are there other things that they are going to be responsible for? I also know that we have some, you know, trained interventionists and people who are, you know, trained to deal with our English language learners. There were some teachers who received master's degrees that we paid for and have since left RPS. So how do we track people that we train and how do we incentivize them to stay with us? Because I think quite a few interventionists have also left. You know, they've received their training through us and then left the division. So that is a concern that I have also. And then I've just kind of been made aware of this program with the University of Richmond, the Essel Praxis Prep Course. That's not something I've known about, or that I don't know that, you know, those of us who are working on the task force even know about this. And so I'd like some information about it and whether or not this is some, that is going to, you know, represent a line item of cost for RPS.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am not sure about that U of R course, but I will check. Certainly happy to provide more detail on the crisis team when we meet. That actually was something I thought I was hearing from the board. We had a lengthy discussion a couple of meetings ago and was hearing a desire. I remember Mrs. White speaking very passionately about this, but certainly happy to provide more detail on that. I'm, again, I'm also open to teeing up some other changes, you know. Unfortunately, I'll take the, the gifted coordinator position. I'm trying to realign and combine some things in the academic office so that we can be more efficient and provide actually even more services to our students. But typically, what ends up happening then is that is perceived as a reduction of, of a certain service. And so I would love guidance from the board about programs and, or frankly, more directly positions that the board feels are not having an impact that the board would be willing to repurpose. The, the challenge that I have is it often feels, you know, given that every person or program has a constituency, that it's very difficult to make some of those changes. So again, if there are some that, that the board would be willing, again, these are filled positions. I, I would certainly be open to looking further at that. And I'm, I'm happy to bring some forward as well, again, with the knowledge that the only way to add more somewhere is to take away from somewhere else. And there are individuals in those something else jobs currently. So, and the, the vast majority of those people, nearly all of them are, are in our schools. And so would mean taking away some school positions, adding other ones, I'm certainly open to that.
Thank you. And, you know, as a follow-up, you know, for example, the cuts that you propose, you don't actually give us any kind of breakdown or explanation of how that represents a reorganization or a refining of the service. So I think we need more information.
Understood.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you. Two things. One, I think, you know, maybe we can look at doing, to Ms. White's point, a student to staff ratio as it relates to like interventionists and specialists and all those things. The other question I had is about the Title III funds you mentioned that, that are specifically for the EL students. I'm wondering how that will align with the money that you are actually requesting. And then the last thing that I had was, I forget, that, I think it was, was it? Oh, I got it. The crisis support. With the crisis support, I think it's hard to kind of speak to that when we haven't had the actual safety conversation. Because I think that if we're speaking for them going out when we have gun violence and all those things, but we haven't actually had the safety and security conversation, I think that is kind of hard to justify, putting a crisis support team in place when we haven't even decided or discussed what we actually are responding to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Young?
Well, Superintendent opened the window, and so I'm gonna jump at the risk of opening up Pandora's box. But I would propose, Mr. Superintendent, though I suspect what I'm gonna say next may not earn me any friends on the stage, but that we revisit a conversation we haven't had in a few years, but specifically what I characterize as disproportionate space vis a vis our enrollment. And specifically, it's my contention that we could accrue significant dollars to repurpose if we were, as a body, willing to consolidate. And so I will be introducing this budget process, a proposal specifically to consolidate, to consolidate, close and consolidate five schools to achieve kind of savings, to instead repurpose in, in our schools in other, in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Colleagues, I want to call your attention to the fact that it's eight oh nine, or probably eight ten at this point. Are there any other questions at this point? Or, okay, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, I just wanted to follow up on the question of like how we move forward. And I would like to request that the administration provide a complete list of vacancies in central office. I think that would be helpful as we're trying to figure out, you know, how, how we move forward. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. All right. Are we okay with moving on, board colleagues? All right.
Thank you for all the questions and feedback.
We are now moving to Board Business, five point zero one. Discuss Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Presentation. Mr. Churchman? Good evening, Mr. Churchman. Board colleagues, Mr. Churchman is here because, at, at your request. So if you have any questions for him, now is the time to ask. Ms. Ms. Gibson, do you, do you know if these questions were?
I submitted my questions in advance.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you receive them, Mr. Churchman? Okay. Will you, are you ready to address her questions at this point?
To the extent it was a part of my, my, my job, yes.
Yes.
There are some questions that are not in my purview. There would be administrations answering those.
Okay. All right. Well, please, continue.
I didn't know if you were to ask them. Okay, I, I, I can read it. Did RPS make, and I apologize if I squirmish at all, it's not about any of you. I've been having back spasms all day long. So sometimes they kick me when I'm not expecting it. Did RPS make the proposed adjustments the auditors recommended in the prior year? And did the orders look at those accounts again? Because of the nature of the adjustment, for example, the adjustment for accounts payable, that was for services rendered in twenty-one, they were charged to the twenty-two year. And so our suggestion was move them back into twenty-one. They were not material at all, and both sides agreed to that. So that would not be an adjustment that necessarily would be made in the next year to fix it, because it's, it's washing it, for lack of a better term, it's washing itself through the system, through the two-year period. So we do look at those accounts every year. We do do a, what we call a search for unsecured liabilities, looking for dispersments that could be in the, in the wrong period. And then if we have found some, we did not have any in those in twenty-two, for example. And so if we have those, we suggest them to, to management. This is with any client. And if they are deemed material, either quantitatively by number or qualitatively by importance to the reader, then both sides agree to, to make that adjustment. Hopefully that answers your, and my machine turned off. Now it's back. Okay. This one, I have to admit, I, I think I understood where you're going with this, but some of the terminology I wanted to clarify. How did the lack of a senior auditor impact the audit this year? Did they, did they increase testing, question mark? Did they, did they do additional walkthroughs of internal controls, question mark? What walkthrough, what walkthroughs of controls are done? My, my guess was you meant senior auditor, you meant an internal auditor with Richmond Schools? Okay. We, we have not utilized them to either directly assist us or to impact the nature of timing and extent of our testing, based on maybe work they've done during the year. We do do our own testing of controls on rotational basis, both at the ACRA level, but then also required to do that at the federal compliance level. We do walkthroughs, for example, in areas that you would expect that would be, you know, key areas of your operations. And our walkthroughs, more likely than not, are going to be at a different level than an internal auditor would walk through, because they're, they're charged with operational matters and so forth, whereas we're charged with making sure that your statements are fairly presented. And so we have a different level of detail and level we go down into in our internal controls. But we do control testing over what you would expect, dispersments, and whether that be personnel dispersments, or whether that be non-personal, insurance, food, you know, food stuff, buying of, of vans and so forth. We also look at controls over your revenues. We look at one of the key controls you have, for our purposes, for the end of the year, is financed as a reconciliation of confirming what is recorded in the general ledger with what the VDOE has put to them in, in their confirmation of dispersments made by, through the VDOA, either from the state or from the feds, coming through to any jurisdiction, in this case, obviously, Richmond Public Schools. So we, that's one key control we look at each year to make sure that that makes sense. Because as you can imagine, it's a huge amount of money you get from, from that source, and we make sure that control is functioning. Did the, again, I'm, I'm reading verbatim, so I don't, I want to make sure I don't miss a single word. Did the auditor, I'm sorry, external auditor do any additional testing on Chromebooks? Then there was, there was not, not a comma there, but basically a break, depreciation and computer inventory balances and so forth. We perform the test that we feel we need to do to render our opinion on fair presentation. So you ask about Chromebooks, for example, yes, we, we bouched almost thirty, thirty percent of them. We, we, we looked at the actual invoices that were paid, to make sure that the amounts came in. We looked at your general, we looked at your detail of the, what we call your capital asset ledger, to see the detail of the, of the items coming in to, to your books and records and so forth. We do for depreciation, and this is very common across most auditors. We do a, an analytical procedure of, does it make sense, this year's depreciation compared to prior years, based on various factors and so forth? And we don't do any kind of, I'm assuming when you said inventory, you're, you're, you're looking, and this would be something that an internal auditor would do, definitely. But for an external auditor, we didn't kick the tires and do an inventory of your Chromebooks. We look at the records you have in place and so forth. This is one, as I mentioned earlier, that's really going to defer to management, because it's not in my purview. Again, this is you. I think I saw reference to purchase thirty-nine buses and some cars in the CAFR. Can you show me where they are included in the budget? I don't recall these items. And so I, I can't help you there. I wish I could. I know what you're referring to. I forgot to write down the page number, but there is a reference in that discussion, in your management discussion analysis. It's either there or your transfer letter, but probably your management's discussion analysis, where it does say, this year's investment in capital assets of approximately fourteen point three million, included the purchases of thirty-nine buses at four point two million, nine vehicles at three hundred and ten point five thousand, eight point two million in technology assets, eighty-seven thousand in cafeteria appliances, one point four million in facilities, services, equipment, sixty-five point seven thousand in janitorial equipment, sixty-one point seven thousand in instructional equipment, and thirty-five thousand in playground equipment. Your next question was, did they look at anything related to USDA reimbursements? We do look at that. We don't look, there's two ways we look at it. One is in the federal compliance area, and we are going to be doing that work for, for the year ended. We did the CAFR first, and we're doing that work now. We're starting, I'm getting the, I'm getting the details from, from management for me to test. But for regards to reimbursements, we look at the money, again, as I mentioned earlier, the, the control I mentioned earlier, the money coming through VDOE to you from the feds, in that particular case. We look at that reimbursement coming through and making sure that it makes sense that when all those monies are put together, that they make sense when compared to what's reported in the ACRA. There are times when there are reconciling items that make those, those items have to be, by their nature, reconciled, the timing of, of receivables, the timing of reimbursement requests and so forth. So, but we don't, as far as a financial audit, again, we'll look at the reimbursements more in depthly from a, what I think you were getting to, from you, was probably like an operational perspective. When we look, when we do the federal work here in the next month or so, because we'll be looking at actual physical reimbursements, making sure that the control was in place, that they were signed, or they were approved, however they were approved, whether it's electronically or through physical signatures and so forth. Did RPS administration share with the external auditors the findings of Richmond's internal audit team and the issues related to our CIP fund balance? We were not made aware of that. No, ma'am. Why does the external auditor not confirm the thirty-six million, seven sixty-two, oh fifty-six of equity and cash for the city? If the auditor, is the auditor checking RPS's reports, I'm sorry, request? If the auditor, is the auditor checking RPS's reports, I'm sorry, request to the city for funding? Are we requesting them in a timely manner, and we are monitoring the hands in a timely manner? I'm sorry, the funds in a timely manner? That's kind of a, there's two pieces to this. The first part, we do confirm cash. We confirm the $36 million with, with the, with the city, and we look at the reconciliation that finance does. Again, there's some timing differences between when checks are cut and deposits are made that would cause any, any bank statement, any bank account to have some reconciling items. So we did confirm that. I'm not sure why it was presumed that we didn't, but it's actually kind of a required procedure in the auditing standards. Your other matters regarding basically the timing of the funding and so forth, looking at the funding. We do look at the funding at a very high level. For us, and again, timing is more operational from your perspective. For us, we're looking at just, is all the money that should be there in this year, is it there? Is it either physically been given to you and spent, and there, and you have some residuals? Or is it maybe still due from the city at year end? And so we look at it as four months, I mean, the whole year. You're probably thinking, are you looking at it quarterly, and when, when the, when the monies come down from, from the city and so forth? I think I've covered both sides of the shot, whether it was something on my, on my end that would be of a financial statement audit perspective, or, again, I apologize if there's things that just aren't in my purview and aren't my responsibility with the financial audit. Again, going back to your second question, I think you probably were asking these type of questions to maybe get a feel for something that your internal auditors could do, to give you more, whatever you're looking for, comfort, or you're looking for compliance and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Okay, so Ms. Gibson has a follow-up, and then Ms. White.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate that. So one question is, and I appreciate the background. So this is kind of a technical thing, but, so who, who does, your contract with Richmond Public Schools, like who, do you know which depart, like, are you paid for out of the administration budget? Are you paid for from the school board budget?
I don't know the physical general ledger account number. I assume that came, it comes out, you're generally in these, most of my clients, it comes out of the finance area. But they had, they could have reimbursements from other departments, like maybe social services giving some money into the budget to fund it, transportation and so forth and such. But most of my clients, you know, the bulk of it comes out, or, I'm sorry, the bulk of it is budgeted for in a finance management slash budget administration type area, and that's where it's paid out of.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I have is, is to the administration regarding where the, where in the budget we approved the 39 buses and, and the vehicles? I don't, I don't, I just, I don't remember that.
Good evening. Buses were initially purchased in the first round of the CARES dollars, our first round of federal funds, and then buses were also purchased in the ESAR. But this should have, since this is looking back two years, I assume that would have been from the CARES. We have a line item in our operating budget for replacement vehicles at $60,000 in the operating budget, allowing us to get about two new vehicles per year in the current budget in that year. I'd have to go back and check since it's more than 60 there, but that's what's in our budget now.
Thank you. So if you could just confirm the, you know, whatever budget that this CAFR is reflecting, whatever the amount was that was budgeted, whether that be, because was this CAFR covering both federal funds and general, general funds?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, so if you could just confirm the, you know, where, show me in the budget where we approved the 39 buses and the vehicles, and then, and then, because nine seems like a lot of cars. Thank you.
Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your presentation. The question that I have is your other document, the annual comprehensive financial report. You do prepare that. Is that correct?
It's prepared by finance administration. We just, we render an opinion on it. It's pulled together by Ms. Payne, Ms. Payne and her rest of her group.
Okay, so if I have some questions, that's what will be the administration?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I did read 144 pages, but there are some things that are a little misleading and some things that seem to be incorrect, so maybe I can take that with Ms. Hadescu later on.
As you recall from my, what's up on the screen, my presentation last time, there are parts of that entire document that are just purely management talking to the reader. You know, the, the financial statements are set up the way that they're required to be under, generally, except the accounting principles. But the letter up front, the management discussion analysis area, that's purely, the premise there is to, is to be able to talk in more hopeful, more laypeople terms, so that a reader of the statements will understand buses being bought, expenses being up this year versus last, last year, and so forth.
Understood, but I just don't understand, when I'm looking in the enrollment, it's saying like 7,000 of our students have left, when I think we had discussed this a couple of weeks ago, and it was like 1,000. So therefore, I'm a little confused about that and a couple of other things in here. Ms. Hadescu, see, your hand is up.
Well, I, yeah, I can speak to that. That's, as we've discussed, those are the VAVAS students that came off our rolls when we ended our relationship with them. They were never really our students in the first place. They were virtual students all around the state for whom we were the fiscal agent. And once we ended that relationship, all those students came off.
I have a follow-up also. Mr. Camaras, you just said about fiscal agent. And in reading this report, I also see that they're saying that the board governs, a separate governing board includes, RPS serves as a fiscal agent for the regional audit education, Richmond Detention Center, Virginia Treatment Center for Children, Hospital Education Program, and the Richmond City Jail Program. How are we the fiscal agent, and who is managing that money?
So, yes, for example, Virgie Benford is the juvenile detention center where students receive education. The Virginia Treatment Center, Hospital Center, those are all, in essence, administered by the state, and the funds just flow through us. We don't receive any funds directly for our own services. We're really just in existence for bookkeeping purposes.
And I just want to say, if we, we have that type of relationship with them, how come we don't use them for our students to take advantage of these agents? Because we are in need of these same services right here in Richmond Public Schools.
Oh, our students do participate as members of the Commonwealth of Virginia. So, for example, we have former RPS students who wind up at Virgie Benford, unfortunately, or students who are getting treated at the Treatment Center, or former students who become adults, who then participate in adult education. So yes, we do access those services as a participant school division. But for bookkeeping purposes, they need to have a fiscal agent, and we serve that purpose. I will note, we've tried as best as we can to get out of the business of being a fiscal agent for as much as we possibly can, as it just adds some work for our teams. Unfortunately, to get out of being a fiscal agent, another school division has to decide that they will become the fiscal agent, and given the extra work involved, there have not been any other takers.
That concludes my questions. I'll ask Ms. Hadescu offline, the other two. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Any other questions, concerns, or comments? Thank you, Mr. Churchman. We appreciate your attendance.
Yes, ma'am. You'll have a great evening.
Okay, moving on to 5.02, Discuss Safety and Security Protocols. So, Mr. Camaras, I'm understanding you're, you haven't prepared any kind of presentation, and so this is more a time for board members to let Mr. Camaras and the administration know what you'd like to see, where safety and security protocols are concerned, or what your concerns are. Ms. Jones?
We, the questions that we sent them, you want us to go through those, or?
May I?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry. You don't need to go over anything of that. When we met for agenda setting, we had not yet received any. And so I had suggested to Chair Rizzi that we could use this opportunity to collect those questions. And so that is why we moved this to Board Business. Yes, I received questions from you, Ms. Jones. We're good on that front. I have not received any from anyone else, and so we wanted to take the opportunity to hear from any other board members, so that we can then prepare all the answers together.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sure it's a question, but I can present it as a question if it is a question. It would relate to how many times in a, in a school or calendar year this board vetoes decisions made by our CEOs at our respective schools pertinent to score. For the purpose of folks that may be listening in, I'm speaking to individuals that have been identified as a threat to themselves and/or been identified as a threat to their colleagues and/or faculty and staff, and the frequency that decisions made at the building level have been vetoed. I think that information would be most helpful in aggregate.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have several questions and probably some comments dealing with safety. And dealing with safety within the last year, at the end of the year, especially the last two weeks of school, we had experienced a lot of different altercations, bullying. As we probably know, we had a, a child who was lost or missing, turned up with a stranger. We had bus fights, bus employee fights. We had students double-banked. We had a active shooter drill that seemed to be blocked. We had one school that even had a homicide in front of the school. And I did say something about the crisis team, because a crisis team is the first to arrive. And I noticed that every incident that we had, it was a delay in responding. We even had visuals with our students out there, and it was no one out there to support them. And I wanted to know what type of form of training have our schools been given on active shooter? That was the first that I heard of it, because we had a lot of parents here at Open Comment coming for one school. And it does deal with our mental health, and we need counselors, and we need to also have conversations with our parents. I want to know what systems do we have in place? I want to know, I want to see this, to show the board, what is the training log? We actually have emergency, I believe, emergency coordinator. Do they go out and train our principals? Do they go out and train our students? It's a little different when you have to do an active shooting drill with elementary students. You cannot just give someone a skit or a booklet to read. You actually have to do that. And I was really concerned when I heard that. I was caught in a tornado drill with one of my schools, and they did very well. We was there for a couple of hours, and we had little confrontations with parents, because they weren't informed. They wanted to come pick up their children while a tornado was there. And I had to actually deal with that. But they understood the significance after you tell them, you know, come in, sit down. But they were worried, they were worried about their children, just like I would have been worried about mine's. These things, I don't hear anything about training. Training never comes up. We see a remind, but you don't hear schools saying, "Well, we have a security team. When are they going to train?" They're in our schools, but we also have a director of security. When is he going to come out and train? If they're not going to do any training, then we might as well use it with the teams, and that might be a position that we may have to, that we may need to cut. Because there is no training, but we have a training officer. I'm not understanding that. There's no person-to-person training, and I feel the same as the parents would have probably felt as an active, active shooter. You have to have advance notice with an active shooter. And if that wasn't given, then we were wrong. So the things that I would like to see is, the board needs to, they need to show the training log. Are we prepared? Are we trained? Do we have the right lights available? Do we have the right cameras? Those things are needed when we're talking about safety. And safety, we can only improve if we are trained. So yes, I would like to know about the crisis team. I am very aware that we have a new climate and culture director. Maybe a plan can be done and then be presented to the board. What all of it looks like as far as wellness, what it looks like for mental health, what it looks like for a crisis team, what it looks like for response. We cannot get to a site an hour, two hours later. We have, we must be there as a team, as a board, but we must be there.
Thank you. One minute. And Dr. Harris Mohammed?
I believe Ms. Gibson's hand was up next.
Okay. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would like to reiterate much of what Ms. White said. I, I, I share her perspective. You know, I, I mean, I think that the, the overarching theme is, is, is protocols. You know, when, when we had a school burned down, there were alarms that were not functioning, and there were vacancies in, in our emergency staff, you know? When we had a bloody hallway in a high school, there were not, protocols weren't followed to ensure that the proper cleaning protocols were followed, or that the, you know, or that students were, were sent home. When we heard about the student who was wandering the streets, I read in the news, yes, we need to look again at our protocols. I know there were protocols issues when there was the tornado. There are protocol issues with the shooter drill. There are protocol issues with the active shooter. So this, 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 this is a recurring theme, and so, you know, I've been trying to figure out what, what we can do. So I believe, colleagues, that this speaks to the importance of our own auditor department. Because the only way that we can make sure that checks and balances are going to happen is if we have someone who is looking to see where those gaps are. And right now, we have in our audit department one person. You know, there are two roles, but there is simply not enough resources there and staffing there to make sure that there is someone circling back. Things only are efficient if we have checks and balances in place. And right now, clearly, there's no checks and balances. And so, again, when we talk about like the school board budget and we say, oh, we got to trim our belts too, right? Like as if the school board budget is some sort of luxury. The school board budget is about safety. It's about constituency. It's about governance. It's about how this district operates. And I believe now is the time where we truly put an investment to make sure that we can ensure that this district is that we can ensure that this district is operating as it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Thank you. What is the protocol of notification referencing a student leaving the campus left a local elementary school? And also, Mr. Cameras, you and I have spoken on several occasions about even secondary students, particularly high school students, leaving without having permission. But, you know, maybe we can get some more, some more detailed information on that. I know when the student is 18, they are considered a young adult. One of the things that I would like for us to possibly improve on and continue to unpack is how can we improve the tiered level of communication not to have a delay? The incident referencing in December at a local elementary school, board members should not have heard about that incident via the news media. And I understand there was a delay, so much was going on, we were preparing for winter break. But as soon as that happened, all board members needed to be notified and what the next steps were going to be. As of today, we haven't received, I haven't seen what the next steps are pertaining to that particular incident. And also, Mr. Cameras, do we have direct handle and care of confrontations that occur in the community before school, after school? And is it RPS's responsibility to create a critical incident report or a threat assessment? If so, who receives those reports? So for example, if there is an issue, if there is a fight that occurs before school or after school, is Richmond City Public Schools responsible for addressing that confrontation? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. All right, Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I have one minute, but I'm going to say again, it's all about training. They have to be trained. I'm not going to give safety a pass for not training the schools. And this has been going on for now, two years, the same thing over and over. And these schools have not been trained. And safety protocols, I know everyone on the board have heard me speak about safety protocols, but they're just not in place. And I know that mothers and fathers, they expect their little loved ones, their students, to arrive and leave home safe, and it's just not happening. And we have to put something in place, and I'm not going to give safety, the safety director, the safety training officer a pass because that is what we pay for them to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Okay, Mr. Cam. And then you, Ms. Jones.
I can wait until Ms. Jones.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to read my questions because Mr. Cameras is right, you all receive them. But I would like to know if we are going to put together, or how are we going, like, so we've given all these questions, like everyone has given their feedback now. Are we going to receive a presentation again that is talking about what we're doing? Or are we actually addressing the questions and concerns that are being submitted? And so I think that's, that's, that's one of my questions. I thought Mr. Cameras was getting ready to respond.
I'm going to try to answer all the questions that were asked, sharing what we have, sharing what we need to do. I'll try to provide everything that has been asked for.
And so you will also provide a overview of like what the security department, like what their role is, what the goal is to kind of maintain safety and security. We'll receive all of that along with the questions that we submitted, well responses to them.
Yes.
Great, thanks.
I also just wanted to note for the record that the security team does do training, and I'm happy to provide those logs. Certainly more training can be done, but I wanted to just clarify for the record and for anyone watching that training does occur.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. I have a couple of questions, and then I will defer to Ms. Burke if, or do you want to go now? Okay, you know, it just sounds to me that, you know, one thing the board is asking for will be, Mr. Cameras, to provide us with the protocols that are distributed to schools. Specifically, I'd like to see drill protocols. I'd also like to see, let's see, I can't read my writing. Protocols, you know, crisis protocols, right? And then training, you know, what kinds of training do our schools receive where, you know, crisis and safety are concerned, crisis preparation? And I, you do have a question. Are there protocols for bus stops? Are we responsible for those?
Do you mean what occurs at bus stops?
What occurs at bus stops and whether children are safe at the bus stop?
Yes, generally speaking, whenever our kids are near us, we take responsibility for ensuring their safety.
Yeah, I'd like to see if you have any documentation of what protocols we have for both bus safety and bus stop safety. Thank you. Ms. Burke, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question and one comment. I do know that the State Department requires us to have so many professional development sessions. So when we get the lists, Mr. Cameras, can you include, I know we usually do what we have done in the past. We've done more than just what the VDOE requires. So can we have that documentation included too, what is required, what reports are to be sent in? And also for the crisis team, if you could elaborate. From what I understood, another question came up regarding the crisis team, what do they do when they're not on the crisis team? They're the psychologists, the safety persons, the, and when a crisis comes up, then they, they are together at that particular assignment. Is that still in place?
I- is what still in place?
In terms of the crisis team, let's say right here at ML King, if a crisis takes place, there are certain persons that are assigned, let's say to all the psychologists in the East End. Once they get the notice from, I don't want to assume a particular office, then they are to show up, which means it'll be a different team here as opposed to a South Side school, who can get there the quickest in addition to the security persons and whomever else.
Yes, I mean, right now, generally speaking, it's Ms. Jones and members of her team who are deployed to address that. Unfortunately, given the number of incidents that occur in our communities, they are attending to incidents every week. So, but like, let me, I'll sketch that out more for you in the presentation.
Madam Clerk, I'm, Madam Chair, have a follow-up?
I'm sorry, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
So, Mr. Cameras, referencing the responsibilities that we have taken on at our RPS bus stops, can you, in my question about the community, handling confrontations that occur in the community? We, we really need to distinguish that and be clear on if that is, is a a requirement or if that is something that we are required to do? Or if, if there is a fight that occurs on Miller Avenue, which is clearly not near, you know, Park John Marshall, Obama, or would be Shepherd Elementary School, what is Richmond Public Schools' responsibility on dealing with those confrontations that occur in the community? And you alluded to our crisis team, or Ms. Jones and her team goes out when there are issues in the community. Can we define that more? Like, what, what are they dealing with? Is it the confrontations? Or, you know, I just want us to be clear because I think the expectation is everything that happens in a community that's not directly school-related, RPS is supposed to show up. And if we are, I support that, but we got to have the man and woman power to do that. We got to have the boots on the ground. If it's not the expectation, then we need to be brave enough to say we need to work more closely with, and I know not many people want to hear this, but if it is not our direct responsibility, then we need to identify whose direct responsibility that is, and we cannot be afraid to say that because we do not have enough boots on the ground, as I have stated since 2021, to deal with every confrontation that occurs in the community, community that is not directly related to a school. We are financially and academically and organizational managementally responsible for. And so we, I think, and I'm afraid, we've created a cycle, and we've created an unnecessary expectation that we cannot hold up to. And we just have to be honest about that. This directly deals with our safety and security in our, in our schools. And so if you can really break that down and be bold enough to share with us, what is the expectation of the school division when things are happening within our community? Because something happened on the North Side, on Lamb Avenue, but it wasn't near one of our schools. It was on Lamb, it was on a street that's on the North Side, but are we responsible for that? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Mr. Cameras?
Yes, and I appreciate you raising that, Dr. Harris Mohammed. I would argue that, no, we are not responsible for that. The challenge is so much of what occurs outside of our schools, unconnected with our bus stops, not at our schools, impacts what occurs at our schools and at our bus stops. And so, for example, when we are informed about something, either from a member of the community, from RPD, whatever the case may be, we tend to deploy folks typically from Ms. Jones's team to go and try to figure out what exactly is going on, who's involved. Should a student be moved? Should special services be put in place to prevent anything from occurring at our schools? So it is, it is a difficult kind of gray area that right now we try to over-intervene out of an abundance of caution. But what that means is those folks are stretched pretty thin because it's not just the fight that occurred at the school, it is the fight that occurred outside of school. And trying to understand, all right, what is the retaliation for that fight going to be tomorrow morning, and how do we prevent that from happening?
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. Mr. Young?
Yeah, I mean, just briefly, in a few moments, we're going to have a conversation about cell phones. And this school board member is in favor of precluding secondary students' access to their cell phones during the day because candidly, I mean, what the superintendent just spoke to along, along with my colleague, often only is exacerbated because of cell phones, and that's just, that's just a fact. The empirical data that Angie Jones has presented to us only confirms as much. So to connect the dots relevant to this conversation and the conversation presumably we're going to have a little later this evening, I do hope that this body will consider adopting a very different approach pertinent to cell phones specifically in our secondary schools. Because my contention that not unlike what was just said, yes, all these, all these issues are only being exacerbated in our schools because students have regular access to the devices and are using, too frequently using them to only cyberbully and, and contribute to what may have, to the superintendent's point, happened a day or two before. So I hope that we're going to be serious this evening and, and take some real action on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Colleagues, I'd like to bring the time to your attention. You know, it is the goal to get through this and not defer any of these items. So, you know, I just ask that we be mindful of the time. If there are no other comments, we will move on to 5.03, discuss auditor applications and next steps.
The administration has nothing to report here. We were instructed to not participate in this process, so I defer to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. Questions, comments, guidance from colleagues, please? Yes, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm, I'm unclear if, I'm not sure why this would be done any differently than when we hired the senior auditor who we're now replacing. So clearly, the, the school board does not have full-time, you know, we have one full-time staff member, and we need to make a hire. So, so, you know, there, there, there does need to be some support so that we're able to make that hire. I would also like to propose, you know, as we're talking about the audit department, that we consider, you know, the, the organization of that department. So I personally think, and I know the positions are open, but we made adjustments when we were making these hires in the first place, but that the senior role is, is a director role because that's the level of work that our former senior auditor was doing. And that our, our, the, the, the role that reports to the senior role, that is a senior auditor because I think that's the, the level of work that that person has been doing. And that we also hire another auditor, that's a senior auditor, who is specifically focused on school safety operation. So that, that is my proposal. And, but I'm eager to move forward. And so if I recall, and Ms. Burke, I believe she was chair when we hired the auditor, our, our former auditor, Mr. Parker. But I, if I recall, the process was that the administration received resumes and, and there, the, there was an opportunity for board members, I think, to review the resumes, identify a shortlist of folks that we had come in. We identified several days to do the interviews and, and move forward that way.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. It sounds very much like the process we went through to hire the clerk. Is that correct? Okay, so then, Mr. Cameras, I'd ask if you could provide the same type of support?
I'm happy to. Again, I just want to reiterate, we were told to not participate in any way in this process. So if the board would like us to screen resumes and set up times for interviews, we can certainly do so.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes. How many applicants have we had for this position? We have not had an update on the number of applicants and has the application or has the window closed for the application process? And when we started back in the fall with with opening the application process and advertising this position, several board members wanted the school board to review the applications, somewhat different from the clerk during the year, I believe, 2021, I think, we went through that process. But not being directly involved in the process does not exclude the administration for providing us with an update to applicants because no school board member has direct access to the frontline application system. And I was told the school board attorney did not either. So either way, the school, the administration is going to have to pull those applications for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Hadasco, do you have something to?
Sure, although for some reason right now I'm having difficulty accessing that site. I, a couple of times, had sent the former board leadership the resumes that had been submitted as well as shared, a process document that we had used for the hire of our clerk and was advised that the vice chair would be leading the process. So that's why we had not done anything else. Since the new leadership has come on board, I've reshared that information with them two weeks ago. There were three applicants at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Hadasco. You know, I, as, you know, coming into this position. Oh, my gosh. Wow. Wow. That was interesting. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and continue. Ms. Hadasco, I was unaware of some of the background as far as the, you know, vice chair having volunteered to run that process. So I'm feeling like we, as a board, need to make a decision about how we're going to move forward with this. Ms. Dorr, you have a comment?
Yeah, we're talking about the auditor now, not the legal.
Right, yes.
Legal is enclosed? So we're not talking about legal at all?
We will, next.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Do you have comment about the auditor?
Got it, yes, I do. I'm happy to, when we hired the last auditor, the kind of process with the administration was managed through via the finance committee meeting. So if the board would like for the finance committee to take on just the administration, setting up interviews, et cetera, et cetera, engaging the board, I'm happy to do that if it's the will of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr. And I do believe that that came up. Did it not come up in a discussion we had, Ms. Hadasco?
Yes, when we were talking about the possible direction of the audit committee, we had discussed that as something they might wish to lead. Yes.
Okay, then.
Would you like me to then forward the same thing that I sent to you on January 3rd to the audit committee, which had the resumes and the draft selection process that I had shared with previous board leadership for the clerk position? Just as a template?
I think that's, I think that's fine if that is the will of the board.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, Mr. Young.
My only concern relates to if there are only three persons, I would propose, because I think or heard that the position of advertisement is closed.
We don't close positions. So there's no close, we keep it open rolling. I think just the fact that no action has been taken on this since it was initially posted in September is we've had applicants withdraw. Now, certainly, and I had suggested this in the past, I'm happy to refresh the application to put it, you know, top of the site or something like that. But I would agree, you have a pretty limited pool.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, I, I'm not sure if that was a recommendation, but if it was, I'd agree with Michelle. I mean, I think it needs to be launched again. I wouldn't, I wouldn't presume that there aren't three amazing candidates, but a position of this magnitude, I think, merits more than three candidates for review.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Dorr, do you have a?
Mr. Young agreed. I think that would be something that we could talk about in the committee, suggestions for boosting applicant pool, et cetera.
So do we need a motion to go forward with this? Ms., go ahead, Ms., Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I mean, I, I, I guess I'm, I've never been clear that this process was going to be any different than it was in the past. So if there were places that the job was advertised in the past, I would.
Insisting.
No, I'm saying from the first time we hired the job, because I remember we had the same issue in terms of getting applicants. And, and so the board directed the administration to promote the position in additional places. And so, I mean, I, I would suggest that the administration do that as it did when we hired Mr. Parker and, and that the process run the same. I have never been under the understanding that there was going to be anything different than this time than it was any other time.
We were just advised that you were leading the process, so we were waiting for your, go ahead.
Let's not be passive aggressive. Let's get some stuff done.
I was just being factual.
No, but come on.
Exactly. Thank you. So I think that we should go ahead and make a motion to get this process started. Ms. Dorr, go ahead.
I motion that the finance slash audit committee lead the administration of the auditor process, bringing updates to the board as appropriate and engaging board members for any key decisions.
Second.
Madam Chair, I have a friendly amendment, or I have an amendment that I would like to add.
Yes, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
I would like to include in the amendment if the board members will accept, it's not to have it be closed to three members.
Absolutely.
I think the committee currently has three members. And because of schedules and just, just different stuff, I think we should be able to have, include other board members just in case someone, someone has to pick up the slack. So this won't delay again. We just need to keep it moving.
That's fine. I will revise the motion. I motion that the finance and audit committee, as well as any other board members that choose to attend, manage the senior auditor process in collaboration with the administration and bring any material updates to the board to be decided on collectively.
Second. Okay, it has been moved that the finance committee will leave the process of hiring the senior auditor. It has been seconded by Ms. Jones. Clerk, roll call vote. Ms. Dorr? Yes. Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So I just want to clarify to make sure that we're meeting the board's needs. We will await any further instructions from the audit committee. Is that correct?
Correct. I will get meetings set up right, up right away.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All right, moving on, 5.04, discuss legal services, next steps.
We've had an extensive conversation about this. A number of emails have been exchanged. I, per the board's motion, put forth an RFP for legal services. I defer 100% to the board as to how they would like to proceed. We have a number of bids. Whatever the board would like to do, please just tell me and I will do.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to ask our legal counsel, is there anything that would prohibit us from, from board members interviewing these firms in the same way we are discussing interviewing our senior auditor and then making a selection in terms of our legal counsel?
Good evening, everybody. I would defer to what my colleague Carol Johnson has sent out, and I'm not sure exactly what, to the extent of the information that she provided, or if it entirely got to the board. But basically, there is no, she did the research, and so I'm citing from her email to the procurement office, that she's done quite a bit of research and there's, excuse me. I've done quite a bit of research on the conflicts issue, and while multiple board members serving on the evaluation committee and then voting on the contract may appear to be a conflict, it is not. I wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly. So if you all, if the board, there is no legal prohibition from you serving in those capacities, there are some appearance issues that you may want to take note of, that, you know, it, it doesn't, the appearance and the optics of doing, both serving in both roles are not good. But if the question is whether it is legally permissible, it is, there is no legal prohibition against doing it.
Yes, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you. So I want to be clear, and with all due respect, that direction is very different than what I have been told based on the procurement law. It's my understanding, and, and this is the challenge, obviously, we're talking about securing legal counsel. It's my understanding that, you know, and I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer, right? So, but that in, that legal services are actually exempt from having an RFP in the first place. And so if that's the case, then it's, it's, because as I understand it, I mean, like, we hired other lawyers and I don't believe that there have been RFPs for that, whether it be, you know, whatever. So I'm not sure why we would even have to go through this RFP process. And I'm, yeah, thank you.
May I respond? First, the RFP process was something, again, that was directed by the board to have the administration conduct. There is no prohibition against the board issuing an RFP for legal services. Legal services are exempt from a competitive, for this particular public body, they're exempt from competitive negotiation process. So the board could have, if it wished, moved directly to secure legal counsel. It did not wish to do so. And it, I mean, and we've had, I know that there was a committee several years ago that talked about this, it came up that that was exempt, legal services are exempt from procurement processes. So the question that you asked me was about whether or not board members can interview legal, you know, the, I guess, the, the bidders or people who are issuing, the, the firms that are issuing proposals. And so the question that I answered was, based on the research, there was a legal prohibition. And so the second piece of what you just said was about legal services being exempt. So those are two different issues. And so, yes, they are exempt. No, there is no legal prohibition from a member, if you do the RFP process, from serving on both. But we do bring up the, the appearance issue. I mean, that's, that's really.
One last final, just to.
Okay, follow up, Ms. Gibson, then we need to move on to Ms. Jones.
Thank you. So just to finalize a point, I'm not a lawyer, right? So the only way I'm going to know if an RFP is exempt or if legal services exempt is if I hear that from our legal services. And so, none of, none of us are lawyers. And so to, to be told that, you know, that to not be told, hey, if I make a motion and it's not necessary for it to be an RFP, then I would hope to hear from, you know, our legal services to let us know that. But then beyond that, if, if legal services are exempt from an RFP, I see no impropriety in board members participating since the RFP isn't even required in the first place. That's my only point. Thank you.
May I, may I, just, just as a final point to this, we were not consulted regarding the RFP. And in fact, when things like this come up and we are, there's an appearance that there may be a conflict from our firm, which we could have been a bidder on this, it would have been, and as we have been cited for, you know, by, by you, Ms. Gibson, as potentially giving out information. So if I were to have said, you're not required to give it, there would have been a challenge as to my permissibility as it has been in the conversation and communications that I've seen with respect to this particular issue. And so it has been stated to this body in a committee some time ago that legal services were exempted from, from the procurement services. And certainly, it was not impermissible or illegal for the board to issue an RFP. And that's where we would have chimed in to give our opinion that you were doing something that was illegal or that was not permitted, but you are permitted to do an RFP.
Thank you, Attorney Lily. Ms. Jones?
Thank you. I just wanted to add the best practice of the appearance. However, I do want to be mindful that we have put out an RFP, we do have bids, and we are also entitled to cancel it if we choose to do so. But I do think that we want to be mindful of why. And, you know, just if we do decide to move forward with what's already in place, which is the RFP that has been put out, you know, the fact that a matter is, is that whether you serve on it or you bid on it, it's not so much that it is illegal to do so. But again, the code states the appearance. So we want to be mindful of that because the appearance of it could essentially create some confusion and conflict, whether it's to a protest or any of that. So I think we should just kind of figure out which way we want to go, right? We have the bids, are we going to move forward with them? If we not, and we decide, I'm not saying we do this, but if we decide to actually cancel the RFP based on whatever we want to do and interview it or put out, you know, position, we just need to figure out how we want to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Attorney Lily, really quickly, is it codified, the whole appearance part of this?
I would have to do the research on that particular piece of it. As I cited, I will, I can bring you back the code section that references that. I don't have that in front of me tonight.
Follow up, Madam Chair, follow up.
Yes, Ms. Jones.
The code states 2.2-4300, Section C, to the end, that the public bodies and the Commonwealth obtain high-quality goods and services at reasonable cost, that all procurement procedures be conducted in a fair and impartial manner with avoidance of any impropriety or appearance of impropriety, that all qualified vendors have access to public business and that no offerer be arbitrarily and capriciously excluded. It is the intent of the General Assembly to, that competition be sought to the maximum feasible degree, that procurement procedures involve openness and administrative rules, governing contract awards be made clear in advance of the competition. I won't read the whole thing, but I was specifically speaking to what you just asked. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, respectfully, I believe that that is a procurement and a, and a RFP process-related code and not procurement of legal services, which we could actually directly just go right now and hire a firm. We don't even have to do the RFP. So I think there's a different code that must apply to this. Attorney Lily, please advise.
I will have to do the research on a specific code beyond that. What Ms. Jones is speaking to is the general principle of the VPPA.
Right.
Right? And yes, it does relate to when you're actually doing the competitive negotiation.
Right.
There, and so apart from the exemption that the legal services is, I, I don't, since you have, you are in that process for the RFP, right?
Right.
The question for the RFP on how you move forward is, at, at, what my understanding is, whether or not board members can be a part of the interview process for the RFP. And so if you're using the RFP to obtain this particular service, then that, those processes are in place, that protocol is in place, that appearance is in place, you know, those tenets are in place.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, whether you do it or not, you know, is up to the board, but there are valid concerns about the appearance, regardless, regardless of what method you use, but especially if you're using the competitive negotiation process.
And one more follow up, Madam Chair, that was to the point where I stated, if we decide to go a different route, you would have to cancel the current procurement or RFP that is in place to then move forward in a different direction.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Ms. White can go. I have a motion.
Okay. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. What I was going to say is that I think the decision is whether we're going to keep the RFP or whether we're going to go the other way. Our procurement services, if they have already done that, that is a lot of work to do and put out. But if I'm not mistaken, according to the BPP, RPS procurement services to lead the evaluation process and the evaluation team should already be established before the RFP comes in. So that is a lot of work that has already been done if we decide to pull it off. But I think we need to make a decision tonight because we're back and forth on this and it's just prolonging. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion to move forward with the process that has already been started by the school board, the procurement process.
Second. Okay, it has been motioned to continue with the procurement process that has already been started with regard to procuring legal services. It's been seconded by Ms. Jones. Roll call vote. Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No, and I would like the record to state that I caution the board from hiring legal services and not participating in the selection of those legal services.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Kambers?
I would appreciate clarity on the question of whether board members should be included in the evaluation committee. I will do as the board directs me. I just need clarity on that.
Yes. Ms. White has a question? Yes, Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kambers, my question is, since that RFP was already up there, don't, isn't there a evaluation team already established? Because that should have been there before the RFP came in. So I'm not really understanding.
We were directed to press pause on that, given that there was a desire to have school board members be the evaluation committee. I need guidance from the board as to how to proceed with the RFP. I can proceed, as we typically do, with a committee of non-board members. I want to reiterate that the board is the ultimate and final decider on any contract. Let me say that again. The board is the final decider on any legal services contract. I will do whatever the board wishes me to do. I just need the board to be clear, do you want there to be board members on the evaluation committee or not, given the issues that were raised by Ms. Lilly?
Ms. Jones?
I move that we, I move that we accept the recommendation for the administration to assess an evaluation committee to evaluate the procurement proposals for legal services.
I want to be clear, I'm not recommending anything at this point. I'm just asking for guidance.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second on this? Okay. All right. So we need to clarify what this motion is. Go ahead, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to add some historical context, because I think it's important. Board members were not clear on the role because some, some of us were looking at this very similar to how the clerk, the process of the clerk in 2021. And so because the legal services or the attorney's report to the board, there was some clarity that was needed to understand what role or not the school board could play in it. So I just wanted to provide that because the original question dated several months ago was that, what is the role? Is this process the same as the process that we played in, which board members were a part of that process of hiring the clerk? And if it's not the same, explain why. So I just want to provide that information. And I do agree, the motion should be clear on if board members are moving forward, if board members are going to be on the evaluation committee or not.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. I think that is an excellent point. I think the salient difference is between hiring an individual and procuring a contract. The Virginia Procurement Act applies to the latter. It does not apply to the former. So when the board is hiring an individual, such as an auditor or a clerk, it is within its purview to conduct the interviews and then ultimately make the selection as that individual reports to the board. When we are procuring services via a contract, then Virginia procurement law applies.
Thank you, Mr. Kambers. You know, I do want to state that, you know, I would feel much more comfortable about this if we had a board member who then ended up being a non-voting member on that evaluation committee. Yeah. Yes, Ms. White. Why are you all laughing at me?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question would be, I mean, it's okay if a board member is there, but the board does have to approve it at the end. What if we need all our board members for the approval? And because that board member who is on that panel cannot vote, and neither can they say anything about the process.
Right.
So, I mean, I would say, my recommendation would go to procurement, the procurement director, because it does have to come back to us either way, and we can disapprove it or approve it.
Thank you, Ms. White. Yes, Ms. Gibson?
I, I guess I just don't understand why we would approve it or disapprove it if we don't have any conversations with the legal services. Like, this is the thing, like, we're going to be working directly with legal services. And so the reason why the exemption is there from going through an RFP process with legal services is because of the nature of the work, right? Like, you know, every lawyer is going to have an hourly rate, and, but ultimately, the cost of it is, it's going to be based on the person, right? Like, how effective we think they are in, in doing the work. So I, I think that we are kind of handcuffing ourselves for no reason. So, I mean, I understand, I'm in the minority here, but I really do think that if any lawyers are watching us right now, they are wondering why we are proceeding in this way. Ultimately, if I'm going to vote on a lawyer, I, I want to have had a conversation with them and, and have some assurance that they are the right ones for the job. And it doesn't matter whether I hire them full-time and they're an employee, or if it's a firm. So this process does, simply does not make sense, in my opinion. And, and ultimately, you know, that's, that's where we're at. There's nothing, the only thing, there'd be a conflict of interest is if, you know, if I, if I had some financial relationship with the law firm, or, you know, they were my family member. But as long as there's no conflict of interest of that nature, there's no reason why anybody would not be able to talk to the person and then vote and decide how to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. We have a motion on the floor.
Did you amend the motion?
I move that we follow the Virginia Procurement Act to allow the administration to initiate the execution of the RFPs that we have received.
Second. Okay, I, I just want to get some clarity.
Okay.
I think this motion, and if I'm wrong, please, someone humbly correct me.
Okay.
Does Mr. Kambers want a clear direction if we were going to move forward with or without board members to be included on the evaluation committee?
I got it. So I, we, I will.
Am I correct? Okay. I just want to make sure I'm correct.
Another amendment, Madam Clerk. So I move that we follow the Virginia Procurement Act relative to the RFP for legal services, excluding any board participation upon the evaluation committee.
Second.
Yes, it has been moved to move forward with the RFP process excluding members of the board. And then second, that was moved by Ms. Jones and seconded by Ms. White. Roll call vote.
I just want to clarify, in your paraphrase, you said excluding the board, excluding the board from the evaluation committee.
From the evaluation committee. Yes.
Thank you.
Are we ready for roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
No.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Page? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to 5.05, receive for first read revisions to policy 8 dash, was that an 8RB? My glasses. 8 dash 5.4 administering medication.
Yes, board members, in your pack, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I proceed?
Yes, please.
In your onboard docs, not inboard docs, but onboard docs, you'll see the first redraft of policy 8 dash 5.4 administering medication. This particular policy is the proposed policy revision, the revisions that are proposed speak to two things. One, the administration of Narcan in schools, and this is through, there is a potential partnership with the Virginia Department of Health that would speak to the Narcan piece. And then the second piece is the administration of CBD oil for students who have a valid and written prescription for that use by school nurses. The cannibal, cannibal, cannabinoid, excuse me, oil was permissible, made permissible, the use of that oil was made permissible by the 2019 General Assembly, and the House bill and Senate bill are listed in the summary. And as I said, the Narcan is, will be through a partnership, if approved, would be through a partnership with the Virginia Department of Health. This is a first read of this particular policy revision. It was briefed with the policy committee informally this past week, and it passed to this stage. If you have any questions or concerns about this, you can reach out to, to me within, you know, weeks' time. That's helpful, that would be helpful so that this can be prepared for a final review for our second meeting, our first, our next meeting.
Thank you, Attorney Lilly. Any questions or concerns? Thank you. All right, moving on. 6.01, receive an update on proposed legislative priorities.
Hi, good evening, Chair Rizzi, Vice Chair Burke, school board members, and Superintendent Kambers, Matthew Stanley, the Director of Advocacy and Outreach, here to update you on our legislative advocacy priorities with the state for this legislative session. I will start out tonight with just a general call to action that we are asking the state to reform our education funding streams to ensure that we have all of the state resources possible to support our students in the division. The Commonwealth's education funding streams have been in place for about 50 years now. We are coming up on the 50th anniversary of the local composite index, the state, new state constitution that was put in place in 1971, and the different ways that the state has been expanding and modifying direct aid to public school divisions over those last five decades. Currently, we feel that our education funding streams in Virginia punish school divisions that deal with some of the trauma and some of the factors that localities like Richmond faces. We believe that Virginia should implement the Board of, the State Board of Education's standards of quality revisions that they have been calling on for the last few years. They have been prescribing those according to the state constitution, but the General Assembly has failed to fund those items. And so we are calling on them to fully fund those items. It would include several new investments, creating a streamlined equity fund that would support divisions like Richmond with high incidence of poverty and trauma, as well as increased staffing for English learner teachers, as well as invest in our teachers and our workforce with teacher mentor and leader programs. A huge part of this is also reforming the local composite index. The last time the LCI was updated, two years ago, for the 2022 to 2023 budget cycle, Richmond lost about $10 million in funding. And every single year, that money is compounded, and we continue to lose more. The LCI formula does not account for tax-exempt property, and Richmond, as you all are aware, has significantly more tax-exempt property than other localities in the state. We are the state-of-seat government. We have many institutions of higher education, as well as many religious institutions. And the LCI formula considers those to be properties that are producing value for the city and producing taxes that would allow us to better invest in our public education system. But we do not receive tax revenue for those properties, and, and it is a detriment to us here in the city in terms of the LCI increasing. It looks like on paper that our, that the wealth of the city is increasing. We're seeing increased income. But Richmond has the highest wealth gap in the state of Virginia. We have significant amounts of poverty here in the city of Richmond, and the needs of our students and our families are great. And we do not have the same ability to fund our public education system as other localities within the state do. So we are asking that over this year and as well as in next year, for the state to really consider reform to our public education funding streams. We are looking forward to a report by the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission that will publish this summer, that will contain significant new recommendations for how the state funds its standards of quality, those programs that dictate the staffing levels and the funding streams that are afforded to us here in the city. One of the other priorities that we will be focused on this year, as Superintendent Kambers shared in his presentation, is supporting all levels of English learners. The past few years, we have been advocating for one of the State Board of Education's proposals that would tier staffing levels for English learner students to the proficiency level of students. This did not pass in the past two years, but we have gained momentum this year, and we're working closely with Senator Hachme and Delegate John Avoli in the House to move forward with, with this proficiency-based ratio proposal. We also are aware of some additional movement with the General Assembly this year in terms of supporting English learners that I'd like to make you aware of. These are some bills that I think that the Division should support. One of them, and these are both patroned by Senator Hachme and Delegate Avoli, one of them would create reimbursement, a reimbursement grant program for supporting high school English learners with, with apprenticeships and, and additional career opportunities. It could be a significant additional financial incentive for Richmond. The amount of the grant program is $500 per English learner student in high school. So if we are able to provide additional programs, we will see some offsetting costs from the state through that program. In addition, they've also introduced legislation that would allow for teachers to receive incentive bonuses if they receive an endorsement and, and English as a second language instruction. They would receive a $5,000 incentive upon receiving that endorsement, and then they would continue to receive a $2,500 to obtain that endorsement. So I think that that is a really great piece of legislation that would inspire many to become English learner teachers. Next, we have investing in our teachers and support staff. One of the most important things that we believe the state needs to do is to completely rescind the support staff cap. Last year, they rescinded part of that cap, but that is still in place to a certain degree, and, and the financial impact of that on Richmond and other divisions across the state is very great. Since, or from 2011 to 202021, Richmond lost over $47, $47 million in state support due to this cap. That was compounded over the decade, but every year, that is additional money that, that we are leaving on the table due to an arbitrary cap that the state put in place during the Great Recession to save money. That may have been necessary at that time, but there's absolutely no reason with the surpluses that the state is seeing right now, why the state can't fully remove that support staff cap. It would cost about, it would cost the state statewide about $267 million per year. We also would like to continue to encourage the state to continue to invest in teacher and staff compensation. We are very, very proud of the collective bargaining that has been happening at RPS. But Virginia, like many other states, we're still seeing significant staff shortages. We believe that the General Assembly should consider to invest in teacher salaries. There is legislation that would continue to force the General Assembly to raise teacher salaries at least to the national average. And that's wonderful. And we also ask the state to support localities with more support and more flexibility for teacher compensation and staff raises. Currently, we only receive that compensation for certain positions. And so with things like eliminating the support staff cap, that furthers our ability to continue to invest in our workforce. When I came to RPS, one of the most significant things that I heard about in my first year from students specifically was the state of our buildings. And so we've seen progress from the General Assembly in recent years with supporting school construction modernization, but significant more work is needed. Across the state, school divisions have documented about $25 billion in need for buildings and facilities. And so there's just still considerable work that needs to be done in this area. The, the commission, the State Commission for School Construction and Modernization, which that was created based on legislation that RPS requested, and Senator McClellan was able to pass, they have been meeting much more frequently over the last two years, and they have released new recommendations for. Uh, they have been meeting much more frequently over the last two years and they have, uh, released new recommendations for the current General Assembly. Uh, two of those recommendations is additional funding of programs that have been set up. One of them is two and a half, uh, I'm sorry, one of them is five hundred million in direct grants for school construction. Um, we received, I think, about six million dollars, uh, this current school year, uh, based on those grants that have been put into our CIP budget. And then an additional two billion in competitive grants for the School Construction Assistance Program, which was created by the General Assembly last year. Um, so those are just kind of still drops in the bucket when we think about the bigger picture of school construction needs across the state. Uh, but this continued effort would be very much appreciated to support our school divisions. Um, we also, uh, would like the General Assembly to support the rebuilding of Fox Elementary School. Uh, Delegate Born has introduced a budget amendment for fifteen million dollars to offset the cost of rebuilding Fox Elementary School. And we will be advocating with the rest of the General Assembly for that to be funded. And then, uh, the last legislative priority that I will share with you today is a, a small but important and equity based measure. Um, there's a program that the state runs called the Classroom Size Reduction Program. Uh, this helps localities like Richmond, uh, ensure that we can maintain smaller class sizes for our students. Um, we receive a significant amount of funding from this program, but every now and then, uh, we have a classroom in a school that due to increasing enrollment, um, and possibly lack of, lack of building space, it goes above that, that, uh, cap on the number. So, for example, at Cardinal Elementary School, we had one classroom that went over twenty students and had twenty-one students in it. And we did not have extra classroom space to build a new classroom. As you all know, we have a lot of teacher vacancies and shortages. Um, but as a result of that and not being able to, to make a smaller classroom, we forfeited a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in funding through that classroom size reduction program. Um, as such, we are asking the General Assembly for a very minor budget amendment that would allow for the state superintendent to provide, uh, a waiver in circumstances like this. Uh, Delegate Born has also introduced that budget amendment for us, um, and we're hopeful that that will pass this year. I'll wrap or not, I won't wrap up yet, but, um, moving on to some of Governor Youngkin's budget proposals. Um, these are some of the things that are very much on the table for this General Assembly session. What the governor has proposed is a starting point for the General Assembly to consider. Um, with a Republican House and a Democratic Senate, there's probably going to be a lot of changes to the budget um, over the course of their deliberations, this General Assembly. Um, but at a high level, the governor's budget proposals did not include additional funding for some of the things that, uh, that, that we really care about here in Richmond, um, one of those being the At-Risk Add-on Program. That's the state's funding stream to support school divisions facing high levels of poverty. Um, we did not see any new funding from the governor for school construction. Those recommendations that I mentioned from the Commission on School Construction did not make it in his budget proposals. So we are asking the General Assembly to put those into place. And there was not any other reform of education funding streams. Um, that is not completely a surprise, given that there is a very significant study underway. Uh, but nonetheless, we are disappointed that, that we aren't seeing further reform. Um, some of the things that Governor Youngkin did do, um, that will allow us to see a little bit of an increase over what we are expecting in our state funding for this year. Um, two of those include, uh, an update in sales tax revenue and an update in average daily membership. Um, we did see a bit higher enrollment this year, so, um, that did bump our numbers up just a bit. The, um, governor has also proposed teacher performance pay incentives. So five thousand dollar bonus for teachers that are high performing and that would be based on criteria set by the Department of Education. Um, he has proposed another fifty million dollars in funding for lab schools for the College Laboratory Partnership Schools that he initiated last year, the General Assembly approved last year. Um, there is a retention bonus, a one percent retention bonus for instructional and support positions, um, that would come into place this fall. Uh, there are teacher recruitment incentives for hard to staff schools. Um, there isn't a proposal to expand reading specialists to grades four and five. If you recall this past session, those are put in place in grades K through three. And there is a proposal for more math specialists for grades K through eight specifically in underperforming schools. So Richmond would be a beneficiary of, of those investments. Um, I've also included a presentation that breaks down the state budget in a lot more detail. I find it, uh, a really, really helpful presentation by, um, by an analyst that used to work for the General Assembly named Jim Regenball. Um, so I encourage you to review that presentation as well for further details. Um, and so I will wrap up tonight with just our call to action. Um, it is time to advocate for funding these priorities that we have. Um, the most important thing for anyone and everyone to do is to email, call and visit your legislators. Um, within the next few days, we will have some form letters as well as a finalized legislative agenda up on our website. Um, you'll be able to use those to contact your legislator. They'll have some talking points and form letters for you. Um, any of those options is great. Um, emailing, I know, uh, everybody is, is very, a lot of people are very comfortable with email, so I encourage you to send those. Um, I also know that legislators respond really well to phone calls. When they receive multiple phone calls, um, those get flagged, uh, very quickly to legislators, uh, as an expression of the public sentiment. Um, and then visiting the General Assembly, uh, they're, this is their last year down in the Pocahontas Building on Capitol Square before they move into their new, uh, uh, building across from City Hall. Um, I encourage you to swing down there any day and stop by our Richmond Delegation's office, but please also make an attempt to visit other legislators' offices. Uh, we need more than just our Richmond legislators behind us. So the more that we can do to educate all members of the General Assembly, the better. Um, if you would like me to go with you on a visit to the General Assembly Building, I am more than happy to. Please, please reach out and we will make that happen. Um, some of our partners are also doing wonderful advocacy events and programming, so I encourage you to follow them um, and join with any events that they're coordinating. Yesterday, there was a rally down on Capitol Square coordinated by the Virginia Education Association. Um, and there will be, I'm sure, other events over the course of the session. Um, we'll be continuing to share any other events that we're aware of through RPS Direct and through our social media, so please stay tuned. And then, uh, finally, I just encourage everyone to consider advocating through the media, whether that is on your own social media accounts, whether that is writing a letter to the editor of the newspaper. Those are all wonderful ways to increase our collective voice and ensure that these issues are on the radar of our legislators and our, and our elected officials. Um, so with that, I will conclude and happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Uh, any questions? Okay, uh, Dr. Harris Mohammed and then Mr. Young.
Mr. Young had his hand up first.
Okay, Mr. Young.
Thank you, he yielded to me. Uh, Mr. Stanley, thank you for this presentation and I will take you up on scheduling some time to visit not just my delegate and state senator, but others as well. I've been, I believe in speaking to all who make decisions for public education. Can you go into a little bit, little bit more detail about the, um, elimination of the su- support staff cap? I know since two thousand eight, nine, or somewhere around there, there has been a cap. Has that, so are they talking about lifting the cap now or?
Uh, yes, um, Dr. Harris Mohammed, the support staff cap was put into place in two thousand nine, as you correctly stated. Um, that was put in place just kind of as an arbitrary cost saving measure. There was no policy analysis or, or, or good impacts that anybody really thought would, would happen from putting that into place. It was just to save money when the state was, uh, hemorrhaging money and going through that recession. Um, there were calls to, up to lift that cap, um, over all of the years since then. And I think that the advocacy really did reach a boiling point across the state. Last year, the General Assembly did remove, I think it was about half of that cap. So previously, the cap only funded about two-thirds of our support staff. Um, last year, they lifted half of it, so now more of our support staff are funded, but there's still, uh, more of that support staff that is remaining. And we just would like for that policy to be done away with because it is arbitrarily limiting the amount of state support that we're receiving for those positions.
Thank you. Follow up, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Are there any legislative priorities that, um, directly, um, speaking to, referring to or revising our current licensure, um, regulations for, um, licensed personnel? I know a couple of years ago, we went from a three-year provisional to five and from a, um, five-year something, could, you know, to ten-year renewal, five-year renewal to ten-year renewal. Um, the governor spoke about, a, a couple of months ago, spoke about, um, making some veto changes or, um, making an urgent request for the licensure team at Virginia Department of Education, I'm summarizing, to look at the urgency of expediting these licensure applications and also easing some licensure requirements. Do we have any updates on that? Because that really could benefit not just our some public schools, but the entire state of Virginia. Um, do, do we have any information on that? And then my last question is, if you can explain how, and I might have missed this, but how, can you explain how the GA intends to provide funding to rebuild Fox Elementary School?
Yes, ma'am. Um, thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. I'll take your last question first. Um, that is easy. Uh, Delegate Born has put in just a budget amendment for a one-time appropriation of fifteen million dollars, uh, to be distributed to Richmond to support the rebuilding of Fox Elementary School. Um, it is very straightforward. There is, uh, no other strings attached to that. Um, that is what it is. In regards to, uh, teacher licensure, I know that this has been a priority of the governor to look at ways that we can increase our teacher workforce and make becoming a teacher easier. Um, I don't have any of the specific, uh, pieces of legislation that are being considered yet. There have been some introduced. I'm happy to follow up with you with a list of those, uh, measures and those are measures that we would certainly support. Thank you. I, 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 I think that we would support them, yes. Um, I could certainly, uh, confer with Superintendent Kamras as those, uh, as we review those policies. But I think generally we want to make, uh, the teacher workforce stronger and, and doing so, um, would only benefit us.
Thank you. Mr. Young.
First two, uh, two points. Uh, one, Dr. Harris Mohammed just spoke to Fox and I think there's a general acknowledgement that we're going to come up short relevant to monies for, for Fox. Uh, and the second point is just to acknowledge Matthew Stanley, who wears a lot of hats and does them all well in the most unassuming and collegial way. Just wanted to thank you for what you do, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you. Any other comments? I do have one, um, you know, with the LCI, certainly I believe the LCI needs some revision. Exactly for what you stated regarding the tax exempt properties in the amount that we have in the city. Um, I do want to say though, that there seems to be some debate with the city now about allocating that fifty-five point four percent that they say they were going to give us for real estate, you know, um, you know, the, from what they've collected for real estate. And so I do want to plug that, that we are looking for them to hold true to that. At least I, I would like to see them do that.
Thank you, Chair Rizzi. And, uh, when we go into, uh, the budget season with City Council, I know that we will be advocating for the most possible investment in our school system, fully funding RPS.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stanley. We'll move on to six point zero three and I'm losing hope that we're going to finish by ten o'clock, by the way. Uh, we, we can see, we'll see what's possible here. Six point zero three, receive an update on cellphone usage, digital access tax task force.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ashley Bland, the Chair of the Task Force, unfortunately was not able to be here tonight, given her, uh, commitments at VCU this evening. So I will pinch hit for her and I'm gonna cut to the chase, given the hour. In short, just about every school system that we looked at and you can see all the policies that we quoted, more or less treat cellphones the way we currently do. The one significant exception is Hopewell, which uses a pouch system. Students have to put their phones in the pouch. It sort of locks and then, uh, they are able to retrieve them, uh, at the end of the day. It is not a foolproof system. Kids are very smart. They use decoy phones. They can, um, disable the pouches and other things. But it is one technique that is used. A similar one is what are called cellphone lockers. It's more or less what it sounds like. Um, there are costs to both. At this point, really, I just need guidance from the board, how we, you would like to proceed. Either to the, the recommendations of the Digital Working Group, we're to tighten up enforcement of our current policies um, and to save the more restrictive pouch or locker system for, uh, students who, uh, repeatedly violate, uh, our current policies. Obviously, this would be a significant change and there is a cost, uh, attached to it. Um, but I just need guidance from the board, how you'd like to proceed.
Thank you. Ms. Jones and then Ms. White.
Thank you, um, Mr. Kamras. Um, I was looking at the presentation and I did notice, um, one of the, um, one of the, um, responses was that the schools which weren't named here, that, um, truly enforce their policy. It was working, so I was wondering if we can get an update of what schools are those and what are they actually doing to enforce, you know, or limit cellphone usage if it's working? Um, and then the other question I had is, um, have we talked to any students to maybe figure out how to get some type of buy-in to get them to also support it? Because I do know and I have heard that, yes, a lot of the, um, issues that happen in the communities are also attributed to cellphone uses, but I've also heard that from students where, um, they have their phone because it's how they know whether or not, when they come out of school, if it's going to be a fight or if something is going on. So they actually have their phone because they're fearful. Um, so I do think that we should maybe, if possible, get some feedback from the students as well, if they're willing to do that and just figure out, um, how we can implement whatever policies are working, but then also maybe include their voices, um, as a part of the incentive to try to do it right. Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I did have an opportunity to speak with my high school advisory council last week, I believe it was. As you can imagine, they were not keen on the idea of anything that would, uh, eliminate their access to their cellphones. I raised a couple of the questions and, and concerns, uh, that members of the public and the board have raised. For example, you know, contributing to fights and taping fights and whatnot. And, um, what I was told is, well, it's still going to happen in the community, so it's not going to fundamentally change all that much. Two, they could not conceive of a world in which they did not have access to their phones, for example, during lunch, when incidents can occur. Three, um, a number of students raised the issue that their transportation home is always a little bit touch and go. Sometimes it's bus, sometimes it's mom, sometimes it's walking. And they need to know that for there's the safety issues that you raised, Ms. Jones. Many families feel very strongly that they would like to be able to contact their, their students at any time during the day, given all kinds of things that are going on in their lives. So, um, but they, they understood that it's distracting. But, uh, but they still felt strongly that folks should just follow the policy. And if you're told you can't have your phone out during class and you do, then you should follow score and there should be consequences and ultimately you should be barred from having your school phone, uh, your phone at school if you continue to violate the policy. But that, um, they have some teachers who are very strict about it and it works fine. And some aren't strict about it and, you know, that's their decision in their classroom. That was more or less what, what the feedback was.
Thank you, Ms. White, then Mr. Young and then Mrs. Gibson.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, uh, to the board, we do have a school here in Richmond that takes the phones away and put them in the actual package, the little pack. And they bring them in in the morning and they get them in the evening. And that is the Richmond Alternative School. And there doesn't seem to be a problem with that with the students. They don't have it all day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Uh, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yeah, I, I think it, and I think what I'm going to say next, everyone here is going to agree. I think the problem is a lot more significant or substantive than just a distraction. I actually think that, uh, cellphones, at the risk of sounding really old, constitute the principal threat to our students' welfare. I think it's why there is a school district right now in Washington State that is litigating, uh, and specifically suing, um, big tech. And, uh, and specifically suing, suing, um, some of the, the organizations, social media sites that are so very popular with, uh, generation, Generation Z. Uh, for the record, I'm not. For the record, I'm not proposing that we do the same, but, but I do concur with their assessment as it relates to the severity of the, the threat, and, and why I don't think that, why I don't think that what we're doing or attempting to do via score is adequate. I mean, I reviewed that data that Ashley's committee put together, and they, they did a great job, but it referenced, for example, this school year, there are only 100 infractions. I mean, I can, and I don't, well, I'm not going to name the school, because I don't want to pick on it, but a school in my backyard, I could identify 100 frac, infractions in 15 minutes on any one given day. So my point is to say that, to contend that what we're doing right now in any way is adequate, I think misses the mark. And so obviously, it's after 10:00 PM, I'm not going to make a motion this evening, but, but I am eager to solicit of my colleagues a, a ban on cellphone use in our secondary schools during, during the school day, and eager to solicit your support at a subsequent meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, you know, I, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Young shared in terms of the developmental appropriateness and the long-term impact that this excessive cellphone and, and technology use is going to have on our students long-term. I think that's a big piece of it. I also think it's a significant distraction, and I think that there are safety repercussions in terms of, and fights and, and all of that stuff. So this is definitely, that's definitely a problem. And I did not know, Ms. White, that the, it is something that's already in place at the Richmond Alternative School, and I would welcome having the leadership of that school come and speak at a, a subsequent board meeting to hear about the experience and how that is executed there. My hope is that if the administration could let us know and what the process was that Hopewell went through to adopt this, whether it be some public hearings, or, or whatever that rollout looked like, I, I would like to, you know, follow, follow the lead on that. My proposal would be that we, we plan in the budget for whatever the, you know, recommended amount is, $400,000 for the cellphones, and then, you know, and that we can, you know, as we're figuring out, you know, that we can kind of, we, we have it as a placeholder in the budget, and then we figure out exactly what the, the execution is going to look like, if, if, if any. I think that the YouTube portion of this should, should not be forgotten, right? I know that we've been talking a lot about cellphones, but at the end of the day, our students sit at school every day with a device, and they're able to watch YouTube for hours on end, and, and there are adequate restrictions in place. And so I think that, I, I would hope that it be universally agreed that moving forward with some type of means of being able to limit what our students have access to is really a no-brainer. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm thankful that we are, we're having the discussion, and I think it's critically important that we do, because ultimately, we could get sued, you know, if we're not protecting our students as they should be. And so, again, I'm, I'm thankful that we're having the discussion. And so what I would suggest to the administration is, look, for the rest of this school year, try Plan B, whatever that is, right? So if, if it's more enforcement, what have you, now is the time to figure out what it looks like. I mean, from my perspective, it's easier, I think, to just have it be universal across the board than it is to cherry-pick, you know, because no, right now, the reason why there's only 100 or so infractions that are reported is because no teacher wants to do it, right? And, and, you know, I spent the day in schools earlier this month, and, I mean, I'm going to tell you that 50% of the kids were pretty much on their phone the whole time, and, and another big percentage of the kids were asleep. So we have work to do, and, you know, I won't get into the discussion about extended day, but to me, this is, this is what comes first. And so, again, my recommendation is, let's figure out what a potential rollout process is, gathering community feedback. I'd like to hear back from what, what that process looked like at Hopewell. Let's go ahead and put the line item in the budget so that, so that we, we have it as we're figuring out next steps. And then, you know, if there are things that the administration would like to do this year, which I would, I, I don't know why we would wait, you know, if, if there are some schools that we want to do more pilots in, whatever the other ideas are, let's try them out, because, you know, if we want our students to, to pass, they need to be, they need to be paying attention. And if we want our students to be safe, we need to not give them the tools to organize fights, you know? Simple.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Ms. Dorr?
The only thing I'll add is, maybe, you know, in, to use Ms. Gibson's nomenclature, Plan B, like, not to be naive, but can we, can we have just a basket in each room where you collect the cellphone at the beginning of the class, and then you give it back at the end of the class, and just have that? I mean, it just, it feels like, in talking to teachers, they don't feel like they have the tools to effectively monitor this or discipline, and they feel guilty about disciplining kids for cellphone use. So is there some sort of small system that doesn't cost anything that we could implement or pilot or whatever, that's low-hanging fruit, that doesn't cost us half a million dollars this semester?
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to see this committee continue, as mentioned earlier regarding getting input from parents, getting input from students, and it is a distraction, and I understand why it's not addressed during the day, because the students, especially in high school, they're walking up and down the hallways with their phones, and they come into the classrooms, they're on their phones, and it's allowed in some classrooms more than others. But at the end of the day, administrators are not going to spend their whole day in terms of redirecting students with cellphones. So it's in the score, but is, what's in the score is that effective? No, it is not. No, it is not. So I'm in agreement of moving forward with, with something. So I ask that this committee continues, and the line item is in the budget as a placeholder, because there are little gadgets that can be used, that the students could get back at the end of the day, or before lunchtime, or whatever. But I, I think we'll see a big difference in discipline, as well as attendance, as well as academic performance. So I ask that it continues. Thank you so much. So we continue with that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. It is 10:08. We need to move things along. We are now at 7.01, receive for action, the personnel actions.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved to accept the personnel. Does she? Ms. Hadasco, please come up and give yours.
I don't think it's necessary.
You don't have to. Okay. I feel like we did this last meeting.
The administration brings forward the nomination of 34 employees, the change of contract of 21 employees, the resignation of 15 employees, the rescission of contract of one employee, then change of name for six employees, and the termination of one employee.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved to accept the personnel items, action items as presented and by Ms. Jones, and seconded by Dr. Harris Mohammed. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Clerk?
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstain?
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We are now at 7.02, receive for action, the 2023-24 Program of Studies.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and School Board Members. So I am here for the 23-24 Program of Studies for the adoption. And so there were many questions during our last presentation around the CTE courses, and so I had the opportunity to sit with our CTE manager, her team, as well as the RTC team, to get some further explanation that I will provide for you. So if you actually go to the third slide around the four CTE courses that we were discussing, auto body, carpentry, electricity, and also emergency medical technicians. So we're going to continue to offer Parts One and Parts Two. We were requesting the elimination of Course Three. So the enrollment tends to be very low in Course Three, because scholars can get certification after taking Part Two. And also, they can do their work-based learning experience at the end of Part One or Part Two. And so, and they can, the other piece is, so with Part Three, it, students have the opportunity to actually diversify their experiences. So say, for example, a student takes Part One and Part Two and gets certified in carpentry, then they can also do welding and receive certification there. And so essentially, a lot of our scholars opt out of Course Three, which is, is an internship, but they want to diversify their experiences. Also, we know that the staffing is limited in terms of these particular courses, like having teachers that are certified to teach these courses. And so because the enrollment is low, we want to ensure that we're able to offer additional sections for Parts One and Parts Two, where kids have requested these courses. So if you go to the next slide, I actually pulled the numbers, the enrollment for all of the different sections. So here's the course request, and the course, you know, course request is, so students actually use School Links to say, this is the course that I'm interested in. So we had over 130 students who were interested in carpentry and welding. We had 130 scholars who were interested in electricity, energy, and power, and we had over 80 students who were interested in auto body or motorsports. So if you look at our current enrollment in auto body, so we have 21 students enrolled in Part One, and then we have 16 students enrolled in Part Two. If you look at carpentry, we have 50 students enroll in Part One, and then nine in Part Two. Electricity, we have 37 scholars, 12 in Part Two. And then the emergency technician, I think you can see as it denotes there, we don't have any scholars enrolled, but we had a lot of course requests. But the teacher who actually teaches this course has been out on leave, medical leave all year, and so the position is vacant. So I'll take any questions that folks may have.
Any questions? Yes, Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to say thank you for the follow-up, because I remember it, the last board meeting. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Yeah, I did have a question about dual enrollment and offerings, you know, with dual enrollment in our high school students, and how some of our students have limited options where dual enrollment is concerned. And Ms. Hadasco said that she'd have something to share with us later about that, so, I mean, that was my only concern.
Okay.
All right, so this is an action item.
Some move.
Okay. It's been moved to accept the Program of Studies as presented. Who have a second? Seconded by Ms. White. Moved by Ms. Jones, seconded by Ms. White. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstain?
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Thank you.
Welcome.
Now we're moved to consent agenda, 8.01, receive for action, board travel and district activity requests. All right. Ms. Gibson, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also, on a related note to this agenda item, I'd like to request that the fund, the, the board receive an update on our own fund balance. We haven't had an auditor for a good portion of the year, so there are additional funds in our budget. And in years past, we have taken the fund balance and divided it amongst board members so that we had additional district funds. And I'd like to propose that we do that same again. I don't know if it requires a motion, but, but I, I, I would like the opportunity for board members to support its constituencies in that way.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gibson. All right. Receive for action, board travel and district activity requests. Madam Clerk?
I've posted that to the board docs, so if we are ready to...
We're ready to vote?
Some move.
Yep. Second. All right, so it's been moved to accept board travel and district activity requests as presented, seconded by Dr. Harris Mohammed, and moved by Ms. Jones, is that correct? All right. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Abstain.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
9.02, receive reports from board members attending committee meetings and conferences. Oh, I'm sorry, we're, okay. All right, well, then we don't have to do all of this. Are there any questions regarding anything that's under other informational items? Yes, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, I was going to mention this on the announcements, but since you are addressing, giving us the opportunity to ask about Section Nine, if, if we can, I, I would like for the board, as we go through this budget cycle and unpacking the Dreams for RPS strategic plan, I would also like for the board, and I mentioned this in 2022, that we also unpack our current memorandum of understanding and see if there's any errors in there that we can have some reprieve and revise and review with the Virginia Department of Education. I think it's long overdue to unpack that. I, I have unpacked it, and there are some things in there that we have met that it needs to come out, and also possibly some things that we need to align with the strategic plan. So I would like for that to be further discussions. I sent an email about that on our next couple agendas. This is critically important, because as long as it isn't black and white, as long as it isn't a document, there were a couple of things that the Office of School Quality uploaded to their database, that, as you all know, I sent an email to them stating it was incorrect. So we have to keep a pulse on this, and it's long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. I've taken note of that. All right, new business. Yes, Ms. White?
I, I thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, for new business, to put the, I, I think I've said this before, but I would like a review of the Maggie Walker selection process to be put on the agenda the next time.
Thank you. Any other new business? Yes, Mrs. Burke?
At some point, I would like to see the breakdown for all of our specialty schools. We talked about that earlier, and how students are selected, and that includes community, open, Franklin, as well as those governor schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burke. Any others? Okay, we are on number 11 announcements. Any announcements? Yes, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, thank you. I am repeating my request to hold listening tours at each of the schools per the teacher retention survey that demonstrated concerns and challenges by the teachers as noted in the survey. I would like to take this opportunity to... I would like to take this opportunity to just give a shout out to Virginia Union University, the Richmond Public Schools Education Foundation, Richmond Public Schools Staff and Administration, and all Channel Six News, WTKR, Channel Six News, and all those who put the awesome MLK Breakfast Program together on Friday at the Downtown Marriott. It was a wonderful program. I think it was well-intended. The speakers were awesome. And I really appreciate the Richmond Public Schools Education Foundation for supporting the program and also school board members in attendance. It was a great honor indeed for our principals and RPS to be on on Friday. And just want to say again, congratulations to all of our instructional leaders in, in the buildings. My last announcement, even though the others were exciting, I am really humbled to announce that in partnership with the Carter, the Carter School of Political Leadership, the Bipartisan Leadership Project, I have formed a political leadership academy called the Political Conflict Resolution for Virginia Leaders in partnership with George Mason University, which will begin in May. This is in no, in no way representative of, of me as a school board member, even though I'm a sitting school board member. And in no way will, at any time, I'll be campaigning for office. I just wanted to share that. If you all are into, if anyone is interested in what that's about, learning what that's about, you can reach out to me and I can forward additional information to you. But I am excited that I was chosen to be in partnership with this much-needed leadership academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Now, Mrs. White, and then Mrs. Burke.
I would just like to say congratulations to the number one basketball team in the nation, John Marshall, and I enjoy your games every week. And just a shout out to Principal Murray.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Mrs. Burke?
Thank you so very much, Madam Chair. I'm humbled and excited to announce that I've been appointed to the Virginia School Board Association's Federal Task Force, and that's where I will be in DC during the first week in February. But there are documents that's coming out, and there are nine of us, nine or 10 of us collectively. So I'm representing the district, congressional district of which I serve. So anything that you all would like me to add to the list, I'm going to use what Mr. Stanley has already presented, but I'm looking forward to that position moving forward. Thank you so much. Greetings from DC.
Thank you, Mrs. Burke. Congratulations. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to follow up on the discussion about the school start time and hosting a public hearing. And so I would like to get a timing on the calendar for when that public hearing will be set. And just to reiterate, that would include a discussion about school start times, the four-by-four bell schedule. And, and, and I, and I think it would also make sense to include the calendar in that discussion potentially. There's a lot of confusion in the community about what's going on with the calendar. And I, I would love to also bring back up again the discussion about formalizing our policies so that we adopt a calendar sooner. Because, you know, we've got people in the community who are like, am I going to have to have my kids start school in August now? Like, this is, this is not fair to be doing to families. So, so the request for a, a public hearing on school start times, the bell schedule, and then a, a plan as it relates to the calendar. And then the other pieces with the fund balance, if we could vote on that at our next meeting so that board members have enough time to be able to use those funds, that would make sense to do.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Ms. Jones?
Sorry, I did have one announcement. I want to give a shout out to Principal Shaw at Miles Jones for a newly formed partnership with Virginia State. They will be bringing urban farming and garden to our students over at Miles Jones to help increase the science and understanding of that through farming. So I'm super excited about that. I forgot, almost forgot about that, so thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. That's great. All right, yes, we are now going into closed session. Who has the motion?
Dr. Harris Mohammed. Pursuant to Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 7, 2, 7, two and seven of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, I move that the School Board of the City of Richmond convene in closed session to consider the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the School Board for discussion consideration, interview of prospective candidates for employment, and personnel actions for today to consider the admission of matters concerning compensatory attendance related to student matters 2223-0102 and 03, where the discussion would involve the disclosure of information contained and a scholastic record concerning a Richmond Public Schools student, and to consult with legal counsel regarding assurance matters and/or probable litigation regarding same where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigation posture of the School Board.
Second.
It has been moved to go into closed, seconded by Dr. Harris Mohammed, seconded by Ms. Jones. We are now in closed.
No, ma'am, we have to vote on that first.
We need to, we need to vote, I'm sorry. Roll call vote.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.